I'd like to call to order our meeting of October 8th for the Woodland Park Planning Commission, and we'll get to our agenda later, and if we could have a call to order, we'll call.
Thank you. DeVoe?
Here.
Watson?
Here.
Hartsfield?
Here.
Hislop?
Here.
Henlund?
Here.
Probst?
Here.
Scanlon?
Here.
Trader?
And Standard?
Here.
Mr. Chairman, we have a quorum this evening with eight members present.
If you'd all like to join us for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic where which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
First thing is, we'll be looking for an approval of the minutes of August 22nd. No, excuse me. Everybody had a chance to pick at them? Any corrections from anybody?
I would make a motion to approve.
Second?
We have a motion and a second for approval of the minutes. All those in favor, say a clap by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Approved. We'll go on to item four. The first one, item A, CUP number 15-005, BSI Yeast Lab, request by Nevada Ventures LLC, property owners and Brewing Science Institute applicant, for approval of a conditional use permit for a use change to 18.09.090V1 Wholesale Trade and Distribution Establishment for a yeast-producing microbiology lab in the neighborhood community district at 106 Village Terrace, Woodland Park, Lot 7, The Village. Laura?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Lori Pellegrino, and I am the city planner. So what if we can just get the lights? Like, just some of the lights? So today is the October 8th, 2015, Planning Commission meeting for this proposed item. It is a request for a conditional use permit for a specific use for wholesale trade and distribution for a yeast-producing microbiology lab on this site. The community meeting for this particular proposal was held on September 16th, 2015, as a courtesy by the applicant, and about 20 residents from the neighborhood showed up and did have some questions for the applicant regarding this proposal. Not very many concerns were expressed regarding this particular application. This application is scheduled for a first reading in front of City Council on October 15th, and it will be scheduled, and it is scheduled, for the public hearing in front of City Council on November 5th. The site is at the southeast edge of the city. You can see on this map, which shows the entire Highway 24 going through Woodland Park, and Woodland Park itself is bounded by this kind of pink line, so that's the boundary between the city of Woodland Park and Teller County. The site itself is located here, in the east of Highway 24, in the south end of the city, very, very close to the Teller County boundary, very close to the Pike National Forest, very close to El Paso County, as a matter of fact. This is a close-up of the site, showing some of the existing uses. The site that we are discussing with this item is this western, southwestern piece of land, Lot 7 of The Village, and you can see there's an existing building and existing infrastructure already in place. To give you some context, immediately to the west is Highway 24, both the eastbound and westbound lanes, and then west of that is Walmart, here at the northwest corner of this particular map. And then south of Walmart are some infrastructure, some detention ponds, and a lift station that exists in this area. This is all part of the Walmart Holdings, and part of the Walmart PUD Development Plan. The site, again, is right here. Immediately north of the site are two vacant lots that you can see as these treeed lots right here, and then north of that are residential homes, lots that are improved with existing homes. Immediately to the east are four vacant lots that are going to be the subject of the second item on tonight's public hearing. And then immediately east of that are more single-family improved lots within the city of Woodland Park, and then this line right here behind these lots, these homes, is the boundary of the Teller County City of Woodland Park jurisdiction, and on this side here is the Pike National Forest. To the south of this particular site, again, is the highway and some vacant commercial properties and residential homes. This is a zoning map, showing again the site, circled in red, and the pink is the Neighborhood Commercial Zone District, which this particular site is within, fully within the Neighborhood Commercial Zone District. The yellow surrounding it is the Suburban Residential Zone District, which are, where many of those homes that we saw earlier are located. Here is the Walmart site, which is a PUD Zone District, and further to the south away from the site is another Commercial Zone District, which is Community Commercial, and then there's a small pocket of industrial land right here. Everything that's in color is within the city of Woodland Park jurisdiction. Everything that is white is Teller County, and again, this is the Pike National Boundary, and over here to the east is El Paso County. These are four pictures of the particular site that we are discussing right now. This is a picture showing the east elevation of the existing Paradox Tweeds Building. Paradox was in there prior, and then Tweeds was in there before that. It has been vacant for some time right now. This is a picture from the Teller County Assessors website, showing what that elevation looks like, shows some of the improvements that exist on the site, and shows the existing parking on that east facade. This is a picture overlooking the particular building that we're discussing. It's taken from the vacant lots immediately to the north, so you can see that, first of all, we're quite high above the building on those two lots, and it overlooks, looking south, over towards Pike's Peak, south and a little bit west. So this is the roof line that you're seeing from most of the residences immediately to the north of this particular building. This photo here is taken from the end of the cul-de-sac at Village Terrace, looking towards the Paradox Building, and you can see some of the mature landscaping that's in place right there. It also shows you the right-of-way and the access into this particular building. And this is a picture of the south facade. You can see it through all the landscaping of this particular existing building. As you can see, a lot of this, the improvements, the building is already in place. There's not a lot proposed in terms of changes to the exterior, either to the landscaping, to the parking, to the road, or even to the building. Staff did a complete review and analysis of this particular application. We did send referrals out to various Woodland Park departments, including the Utilities Department, the Public Works Department, the Police Department, the Economic Development Department, and the Building Department. We also sent out referrals to external agencies, including the Northeast Teller County Fire Protection District, IRA, Black Hills, Baja, CDOT, CenturyLink. We didn't get a lot of responses back. There were not a lot of concerns. If we don't get a concern back in writing, then our default position is that they don't have any concerns, and that's what we witnessed with this particular application. The Building Department did say that a changing use like this would require a building permit for any interior remodels or renovations, plus the applicant is proposing to insert or install an elevator, which will need a building permit. So a change of occupancy will be required for this particular operation. Public notices were all completed according to the municipal code requirements. We sent notices out to approximately 25 adjacent property owners, more than what the code required. We tried to capture most of the neighborhood with these mailed notices. We also put a poster on the site that published today's meeting date, and also the upcoming council meeting dates, and we did publish the Planning Commission agenda in the Pike's Peak Courier. The zone, as I mentioned earlier, is the Neighborhood Commercial Zone District. Staff did an analysis of all the limitations with respect to the NC Zone District, and did find compliance with respect to this proposed use fitting into the NC Zones Zone District. This is extremely hard to read, I apologize for it, but really what this does is tells you the intent and purpose of the NC Zone District, and if I can summarize it in one word, it is a Commercial Zone District. So you might hear some comments about residential lots. Ultimately, the intent and purpose of the NC Zone District is for commercial use and commercial purposes, and that is what this applicant is proposing. What this does is list the limitations within the NC Zone District, the permitted uses. For instance, a bank could go in the NC Zone District as an outright permitted use with just an administrative site plan review. The conditional use, which is the application for today, is a use for wholesale trade and distribution establishment, which is what the BSI operation will be slotted into. The height, the setbacks, the frontage, the parking, fencing, signs, sidewalk landscaping, all currently exist. These are existing conditions. They all comply with the NC Zone District requirements. Staff does find compliance with the Zone District. With respect to standards for review for a conditional use permit for this particular application, there are 11 standards that we look at, that are in the municipal code. Staff does find compliance with all of these 11 standards, ranging from the need for this type of an operation, and the fact that this building is a perfect fit for this applicant, which also allows them to grow because of the size of the existing structure and their need to grow. They also desire to stay in the city of Woodland Park, and Woodland Park would like to continue that relationship with them. Staff does not find any impacts to public health and welfare with this proposed use, no impact to property values. Staff does believe it harmonizes with the neighborhood, with the site, with the commercial area, and the residential area, that it complies with all city plans that are applicable, with all city regulations that are applicable, that there is a decrease in traffic from this proposal based on the previous uses, and based on the commercial and office uses that were originally contemplated in 2004, that there are no additional surface drainage impacts or infrastructure necessary, that the water, sewer, and wastewater proposal for this particular operation is adequate. The applicant is on a septic system, which is approved by the Teller County Environmental Health Department. They will need to upgrade that permit to accept waste that they will be ejecting from their operation, and they have proposals to do various tanks. They are looking at amendments to their current septic system, which is all handled through the Teller County Environmental Health Department. Staff has no objections. One of the conditions that we did have was that they make sure that they get all their approvals for their sewage disposal. The long-term goal is to connect to the city sewer system, as you'll see with the next item on the agenda. This applicant hopes to connect to the wastewater extension that is being proposed as part of the assisted living facility, and that is probably going to be a year out before they actually break any ground for that. But at this point, they are going to continue to use their septic system, and they will get their approvals updated. Staff does not find any hazards to the site or to the operation from the approval of this proposed operation, and the architectural design is more than sufficient for what the proposed use is, and it is one of the nicer buildings in the city of Woodland Park. Staff does recommend approval of this conditional use permit for a changing use to allow for wholesale trade and distribution for Lot 7, which is located at 106 East Village Terrace, based on three conditions, subject to three conditions. The first condition is that prior to issuance of any certificate of occupancy for this particular proposal, that a full code study be done by a licensed professional with the building permit submitted, that we receive confirmation of the water line upgrade, if it's even necessary, based on the fixture count that they have to submit with the building permit application, and also any additional tap fees that may be required with this service line upgrade, if an upgrade is required. We would also like a copy of the approved septic permit from the Environmental Health Department, showing that the septic system can sustain the additional waste that's going to be proposed for it. There will be a requirement, once the wastewater sewer connection is made, for them to get a sewer tap to connect to that installation, and there'll also be analysis for that installation prior to it being approved. And finally, staff requires that there be conformance with the application as submitted, and that all representations in this hearing and in future hearings are binding on the applicant. That concludes staff's report. The applicant is here tonight and does have a brief presentation, and I would suggest that we listen to their presentation, and that might answer some questions before we ask me any questions.
Thank you. One thing I also want to cover before the applicant comes up is disclosure of any ex parte communication or conflict of interest. If they have any relationship with the applicant, or other communications that may bias or predetermine the outcome. If anybody does speak up, if not, we'll continue to go on. Anybody? Okay. The applicant's turn to come up. Please state your name. Tell us a little bit about you.
I'm sorry, say again?
Your name?
Yeah, my name is Brian Pearson. Both myself and my partner, David Bryant, are business partners at BSI. Thanks for the time to let us give our presentation. We want to tell you a little bit about what we're trying to do. Where do I start? There we go. Okay. First, a little bit about BSI, maybe, a number of people probably don't know who we are. We kind of fly under the radar, but we've been operating here in Woodland Park for the past several years, and in Teller County for more than a decade. We started, or the business started in 96, and we moved to Teller County. It was up in Divide in 2002. We relocated to Woodland Park at Gold Hills North in 2011, and we operated there for a couple of years. Our business is growing, so we ran out of space, and we moved across the street about two years ago to Gold Hills South, where Ben Franklin used to be. We've kind of tinted out our windows, so a lot of people may not even be aware that we're there. But we were, rest assured, we are operating all the time. Business is going well, and we are continuing to grow. We currently have about 20 employees, working a few different shifts. Most, all of the employees are degreed employees, usually with a BS degree, a few master's degrees, mostly science degrees, or most of our staff have science degrees. Full capacity in the new location, if everything is approved and goes as planned, would be up to about 30 total employees. This is a question, a lot of people aren't sure what we do, so we wanted to discuss that. We hear a lot of different rumors as to what this business is, but to explain to you briefly, our primary focus is making yeast. We grow yeast for breweries. Craft breweries are our primary customer, the microbreweries around Colorado and around the U.S., and we do have a number of, several dozen international customers as well. The yeast that we have acquired over years and years of being in the industry from different famous breweries around Europe and certain other famous breweries around the world, we take these samples, we purify them, and we grow them up and sell them for specific types of beers that our customers are interested in. They're grown in a food-grade product. It's a barley malt syrup. It's a little bit similar to molasses, is a good way to compare it, but malt syrup is a similar ingredient that you might find in malted milkshakes or malt balls. Very tasty. It's just a sweet product that the yeast likes to grow on and multiply and give us all jobs. We have, I have a few photos here. They may be a little bit difficult to see, but we have our quality control supervisor checking yeast through the microscope, and then on the, in the flasks there, we have a few different strains of yeast that are growing, ready to be propagated up into larger All of the yeast has grown up in a matter of a couple of days, depending on the quantity that our customers are interested in. Then we concentrate that, and you can see in the left-hand photo, there's a box, and next to that, there's a small bladder container that contains the yeast that we've concentrated, and we'll be shipping that out, either FedEx or UPS overnight service, to our customers. We can usually get the products delivered in 12 to, or, excuse me, 18 to 48 hours. The packages are picked up in boxes similar to what you see there by either UPS or FedEx, and shipped out that way. The truck you see in the rightmost photograph is a standard UPS truck, so those will be the delivery, or the pickups that we'd be seeing, mostly Monday through Thursday, since we want everything to arrive the next day. Monday through Thursday are our prime shipping days. How will we use the building? We love the building. We like the way it looks, and it works well for us as is, especially on the outside, so we don't want to change anything short from maybe tinting the windows. We want to keep, for energy efficiency, and we, we just, or we want to smoke them out for a little bit of privacy. That'll be about the only big changes we'll do. BSI is not open to the public. Our customers don't come visit, and they're not allowed to come visit, so the traffic will be, will be very minimal. It will only be our employees and the delivery drivers picking up and taking out. The interior of the building, we'll go through the Woodland Park change of use process, but most of it is going to remain the same. It's a large open space, and we've made a few comparisons to the space we're in right now versus how we'll reuse the space in the new building. The lower area, where Paradox was before, will be used for shipping and receiving, will also use that for pre-production. All the pre-production, that's mixing up the ingredients and cooking it to sterilize it, from there, it'll move up to a cleaner area on the upper floor, and we would like to put in an elevator to lift up from the production area to the upper level. The upper area, that's where Tweeds was located before. It's been vacant, and largely vacant, since Tweeds left. Excuse me. The eastern part of the area will separate as a clean room that will have HEPA filter that's high-efficiency, high-efficiency air in that area to keep the area as clean as possible. We want to keep our yeast as, keep it from getting any other outside organisms, just wild growing, anything. So we always run these HEPA air filters to keep the air nice and clean. That will be the clean room on the east side. You can see sort of a comparison on the right side. There's a wall there where our current clean room is, which we're going to need to expand. The west area of the upper floor will be a large cold storage area. We have, will have about 1,000 square feet of cold storage. After the yeast is grown, we can very gently put it to sleep by moving it to refrigeration. The yeast slows down, its metabolism settles to the bottom, and that aids in helping us to concentrate it, concentrate the part that we want to sell. Once the yeast is settled to the bottom, you see the photo again, it'll be concentrated and put into these containers, the polyethylene containers, put in a cryo box, lots of ice packs, and shipped out from the west garage door. There's a garage door that'll go up for a shipping and receiving area. How much traffic? Full capacity. We expect to have as many as 30 employees, and most of the shifts will be, or most of the traffic, or the, when the employees will be there, will be from about eight to five. We do have a skeleton crew a little bit earlier, and skeleton crews a little bit later, but the main business, and I guess that should be Monday, or seven days a week, not just Monday through Friday, but the large bulk of the crew will be there Monday through Friday, eight to five. The traffic analysis that we had done shows about 65 weekday trips, and the analysis that was done back in 2004, 2005, was, when the building was originally developed, was 322 trips. So we're going to be reducing down to about 18% what was originally anticipated, so it'll be quite a big drop. We will have a few tractor-trailer deliveries, and that will be to the lower entrance, quick in and quick out, where the garage door where Paradox was located before. And then the pickups for our final packaged product going out, that'll be the standard FedEx and UPS box trucks, Monday through Friday, late afternoon, or, excuse me, Monday through Thursday, late afternoon, I'd say 3:30 to 5:00 p.m. In the conditions, the build-out will be, will go through a change of use application. Most of the work will be done by Paige Construction and Chuck Severance Architects, both here in Woodland Park, and full code study will be done accompanying the build-out. We will review the tap line size and adjust with our final fixture count as requested. The septic and sewer plan will go through a city in Teller County. The septic system, we have been evaluating with Alpine Engineering, also a local company, and will develop a plan for the septic system, so if we, if we need to, we'll make sure that that septic system is operational at the time we move in, and we would like the option to extend in the future a new main sewer line, as referenced earlier, and that could begin as soon as the first quarter of 2016. The timeline, the sale will complete, hopefully, within a week after final approval by the council, second week in November. Then we'll start a build-out after that, after the change of use approval, in, most likely, starting end of November through first part of January. Or, excuse me, that's the process. The build-out would start after the first part of the year, February through May, and we would like to start moving in sometime in May or June of 2016. In summary, BSI has been a longstanding member of Teller County and Woodland Park community. We employ 20 to 30 employees, mostly science, science-degreed people in the food science and biology fields. Our operations closely resemble a large bakery or a food science operation, and that's where part of the confusion lies. People here brewing science and tend to compare us to a brewery. That's why we wanted to explain that we're a lot closer to a bakery or a food science than we are to a brewery. We won't alter the exterior of the building, other than what we said, maybe tint out the windows. We're low traffic, 18% of the anticipated traffic from the study when the development was originally put together in 2004. We'd like to say BSI stabilizes the neighborhood by offering full occupancy to the building, which has been vacant for a number of years. Minimal traffic, no exterior changes to the building, solid employee base, and a property tax income for the city of Woodland Park. All right? Thank you.
Thank you. At this point in time, if anybody on the commission has questions of either the staff or the applicant, now is the time to ask those. You may end up coming back up there, we'll see what's going on.
I just have one quick one.
Sure.
Brian?
Yeah.
Brian, Peter Scanlon. Is there, stupid question probably, but thanks for the outline on the business. Is there cooking or any type of process that emits any kind of odors? Now, yeast may not be a bad odor, but particularly if it smells like bakery, but just, you know, to give us a sense of, does your process emit any type of odor?
Yep, yep. Good question. Cooking is, is all that would probably be, you would consider producing much odor, and that can all be controlled with vent hoods and carbon filters. When we do mix up the main food, the media, it's predominantly a barley malt extract. It smells a little bit like cooking molasses, and I referenced that before. It's, again, similar to a bakery smell, and that would be very localized and could easily be, can easily be controlled with venting and carbon filtration. be, can easily be controlled with venting and carbon filtration. The yeast itself produces very little odor, produces a little bit of CO2, most, when we're growing yeast, it, we try to keep it growing with air, so it will multiply rather than ferment like it would in a brewery. The brewery wants the fermentation, we want to multiply the yeast. There's very little aroma in that situation. In fact, we brought, we brought people by to walk through the process and see, you know, what's it, what is it like here in the cooking versus in the clean room where we have the yeast growing, and it's very minimal in there, that you wouldn't notice outside the building.
The only reason I asked is because today you're kind of surrounded by Burger King and lots of other establishments that send a lot of stuff through the air.
Sure, sure.
And with your occupancy of this new building, you're more standalone, maybe Denny's somewhat near, but, and more adjacent to neighborhoods. So that was really the gist of my question. In your process, you don't seem to be suggesting there would be a lot of, we'll call it for lack of a better term, noxious odors that neighbors would find objectionable.
Right, right. Yeah, it's, I don't think that, that any, any aromas would be, I think that they would be considerably less than any of the restaurants that you mentioned.
Okay.
Yeah, and we wouldn't put any ventilation on the highway side anyway, and that would be very minimal, and if, you know, if it smells a little bit like a bakery, I don't really consider that to be, to be all bad.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
I just have one question, why the need for tinted windows?
Part of it is privacy. We have a proprietary process, and we, that's one reason that we don't have our customer, allow our customers in. We don't want them to learn how to do what, what we're doing, so we, it's privacy and energy efficiency.
Okay, thank you.
A related odor question, have you had any complaints or any problems with odor in your current location?
There has been a question from a tenant that shares a wall with us, or a floor to a ceiling, and, and we're working right now in our current location to try to vent that elsewhere, and the complaint was that it smells a little bit sweet.
Anybody else? Thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, we'll open public comment, Dave, we got anybody signed up? Thank you. Name, address, all that good stuff.
Sharon Rocha, Coldwell Banker, forty-five Leisure Lane, and I am only here to represent the seller, Nevada Ventures. And if I could defer any other comments, may not have any, but I want it to be available for questions.
Phyllis Callen? I sound that last name? One eighty-seven Glendale Drive?
Cahill.
Phyllis Cahill?
Yeah, it's me, I wanted to comment on-
If you'd come up here, please, it's only because we got to get it on record, we're not trying to make you-
She wanted to comment, want to comment on the next one.
Oh, you want to comment on the next one?
Exactly.
Not on this one, okay, we'll hold that off. Jeff, are you in the same situation?
I guess I'd like to make comment on this one, too.
Same drill, Jeff, name, address, all that good stuff.
Jeff Cahill, one eighty-seven Glendale Drive, right across the street from Tweed's previous location. I am here primarily to converse about the second situation we're having tonight in the same block area, but I've been shopping City Market for the last three years and accidentally walked into their operation trying to find some location for a recent chiropractic who wanted a sign quote, and I'm surprised by all the, the shoes that were downstairs, like, acting like it was a clean room, I had no idea what was operating there because it wasn't advertised, there was no sign or anything, so I've never smelled anything in that vicinity, and therefore I have no objections to what the proposal is, and, but I do have some issues on the next item, so I'll be-
Sure.
I'll hold that back until we get to, get that all covered, okay?
Very good, thank you.
All right.
Anybody else that didn't have a chance to sign up? Want to talk about this issue here. Okay? At this point, we'll close the public session, and we'll, at this point, I don't think we need any rebuttal from anybody. Any final questions, folks? If not, we kind of need a motion.
I would still move. I think it's a great thing that we're getting a building and taking it over and it's not sitting there vacant, thank you, very much.
The motion's going to be with the conditions-
Yes, with the, sorry, I lost, yeah, with the recommendation, the four recommendations. To approve case number, um-
I lost the case number. It's on page seven of the staff-
CUP one-five-dash-zero-zero-five, BSI yeast lab.
We have a second. A second. Motion and a second.
Thank you. DeVoe?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Hartsfield?
Yes.
Islam?
Yes.
Penland?
Yes.
Probes?
Yes.
Scanlon?
Yes.
And Standard?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you, folks. Now we'll read the second, or item B and C together, as they both track together on this. CUP fifteen-dash-zero-zero-six, and SPR fifteen-dash-zero-zero-two, Woodland Park Assisted Living Facility, request by RTB Development LLC applicant, Woodland Park Storage LLC property owner, for approval of a conditional use permit for eighteen-dash-oh-nine-dash-oh-nine-oh J-three nursing home, convalescent home, rest home, and home for the aged, and approval of a site plan review for a fifty-bed, two-building assisted living facility in the neighborhood community district at one oh-seven, one seventeen, one twenty-seven, one thirty-seven, Village Terrace, Woodland Park, lots one through four, The Village. Item C, VAC-dash-fifteen-dash-zero-zero-seven, Village Terrace ROW, request by Nevada Ventures LLC property owner, and Woodland Park Storage LLC property owner, for the approval of the vacation of Village Terrace right-of-way.
Thank you, Chairman DeVoe, I hope you guys aren't tired of me yet. This is the second item on the agenda for tonight's planning commission hearing on October eighth, two thousand and fifteen. My name is Laura Pellegrino, and I am the city planner. This is an application for a proposal for the Woodland Park Assisted Living Facility. It's a conditional use permit application in conjunction with a site plan review, and it's also an application for a recommended vacation of the Village Terrace right-of-way. And the planning commission tonight makes a recommendation to city council on all three of these applications. The application for a CUP is to change the use to a nursing home, convalescent home, rest home, and home for the aged. It's to allow this use, which is a conditional use in the NC Zone District, so that a two-building, fifty-unit assisted living facility can be constructed on this site. There is, there was a community meeting, again, in conjunction with the BSI application, both applicants presented their proposals on September sixteen, two thousand and fifteen. Again, approximately twenty residents from the neighborhood showed up and listened to the information that was presented and did present some concerns, and I'll get into those concerns a little later into my presentation. This application, all three of these, are scheduled for first reading in front of city council on October fifteen, two thousand and fifteen, and the public hearing on all of these applications is scheduled for November fifth, two thousand and fifteen, in front of council. Again, the site is in the southeast corner of the city of Woodland Park, immediately adjacent to the BSI application. The boundaries of the city, again, are shown in pink, and you can see it's very close to the boundaries on all sides of this particular site. This air photo shows the four lots that are being proposed and in question today, and this is also the right-of-way, this cul-de-sac is the Village Terrace right-of-way that is also being proposed for vacation tonight. These four lots will be the site for the two buildings, one building will encompass these northern two most lots, and the second facility, which each building will have twenty-five units, the second building will encompass these first two lots, and they are numbered from one through four as you go north on this particular property. Again, some of the context in this area, this is Glendale Drive coming off of Highway twenty-four right here, and immediately adjacent to that to the east are single-family residential lots, mostly improved, and immediately to the east of that is the Pike National Forest within the Teller County jurisdiction, and then east of that is the El Paso County boundary and El Paso County. To the north are residential lots that are mostly improved with homes on them. These four lots for the, under consideration with the site are currently vacant and, for the most part, unimproved, although there is access to the existing water service line. These two lots here, this entire subdivision is called The Village, and this is in order, lot one, two, three, and four, which are the lots for the site, this is five and six, which are currently vacant and not part of this application under consideration today, and this is, of course, the old Tweed's building, the Paradox building, soon to be the BSI building. Immediately to the south is a vacant lot, that is zone commercial, and then, of course, you have the Highway right-of-way, both east and south, east and westbound lanes, and then again, you have the Walmart property right here, the detention pons, the lift station. This is a female floodplain immediately to the west of this site here for the Walmart. So that's just a general context. Again, what you see in red delineated as the site are the four lots. Again, we are in the Neighborhood Commercial Zone District, the yellow is the Suburban Residential Zone, the darker pink is the Community Commercial Zone, again, this little red is a pocket of industrial, the white is the jurisdiction of Teller County, and the purple up here is the Walmart property, PUD zoning. So that gives you a surrounding zone context. These are some pictures of the site, showing some of the surrounding buildings and also showing some of the context. This one is from the top of the cul-de-sac at Village Terrace, looking into the site, gives you an idea of lots five and six, which, again, are not part of this application, but it gives you some idea of some of these topography that is on that site and on the northernmost site of lot four. This is, you can see at the ridge the nearest residence, and below this picture you can see, this is the residence, again, both of these are to the north of the subject site, this one is to the northwest, this one is pretty much straight north of the property. So that gives you a little bit of an idea of some of the homes that are around there and some of the existing landscaping that is on the site. These two pictures on the right show, again, from the edge of the cul-de-sac looking into the site, looking east towards El Paso County, Rampart Ridge, and it gives you an idea of some of the mature trees that exist on the site and some of the existing terrain that the applicant is working with, and again, it gives you a little bit of an idea of some of the surface for the Village Terrace right-of-way. This is from the top of the cul-de-sac looking south towards Pike's Peak, which is right there, and it gives you an idea, again, of the improved right-of-way and some of the landscaping and what you see in terms of a site that is there right now. This is a site plan that was submitted with the application, it was included in the pack, it was distributed to all of the planning commissioners. It shows, again, this is the BSI building, it shows the four lots and the two buildings, this is the southern building and the northern building that will encompass this complex. The applicant does propose to develop this in phases, with phase one being the northern building and the associated parking lot and the associated courtyard. What you can see surrounding the buildings are terraces that will be necessary to level the site, and they will also be fully landscaped and beautiful outdoor areas. So that kind of gives you a layout of the site, the parking lot is within the two buildings, so you will not see a lot of the parking as you're driving down Glendale Drive right here, but as you're, Glendale Drive is above the entire site, and you will be looking down into it and at the roof. Many of the residences around here will be looking over the roof. And again, the maximum building height for this particular zone district is thirty-five feet. Both of these buildings are proposed as single stories, less than thirty-five feet, they do comply with the height requirements. This is very difficult to read, but it shows you a schematic of what the floor plan could possibly look like, it'll show you, it shows you the room layouts, and this is the northern building, this is the first phase of proposed construction. It shows just a typical layout with a room, most likely the bedroom, perhaps with a daybed, a bathroom, a small sink, maybe an undercounter refrigerator, and that's it. Those are the units that encompass twenty-five units within one building. This particular building also shows the garage that will be attached on the left-hand side, and I'll point that out to you on the rendering as well when we get to that. But essentially, this shows you one of the buildings of which two are proposed. This is the rendering for that northern building, this is that garage that will contain most of the waste and loading and unloading for this particular complex for both facilities. What this rendering really shows, apart from, this is not the existing landscaping, although there are trees around the site, this shows just the typical layout, the applicants worked very hard to try to keep the building low, to try to keep it a single story, and to try to incorporate the design into the, what exists in the neighborhood, what exists with the residences, what exists with the commercial building. So you see the gable roofs, you see the type of residential construction, and you see a lot of articulation on the facade, you see the windows and the doors that look, make it look like a residential-type development, and you also see a lot of design features like the stone and the stucco and the harmonization with the colors. So staff did a complete review and analysis of this particular application and of the right-of-way vacation and site plan review criteria. We did refer to various departmental agencies, including the Utilities Department, the Public Works Department, the Police Department, the Economic Development Department, and the Building Department. We also referred these applications out to various external agencies, such as the Northeast Teller County Fire Protection District, IAEA, Black Hills Baja Cable, CDOT, and Century Link. We did receive some referral responses, and those referral responses were fairly minor in nature, mostly from IAEA with respect to the easements, and the applicant has complied with IAEA requirements in terms of what easements they would like to see maintained, and staff doesn't have any objection to what the applicant's proposing. We are still awaiting comments, official written comments, from the Northeast Teller County Fire Protection District and from the Colorado Department of Transportation, although I have verbally spoken with both of those agencies, and it does not appear that they have any major concerns at this time. But I will be getting major comment, uh, written comments back from them, hopefully soon, hopefully before the council hearing. Regardless of whether or not I receive comments, there is a condition that is being proposed with respect to compliance with any comments that we do receive from CDOT or from the Northeast Teller County Fire Protection District with respect to this proposed use. We did a full and complete public notice of these, for these applications, that included adjacent property-only notices to all twenty-five residents in the community, which is, again, above and beyond what we would normally be required to do according to the municipal code. We did two onsite posters that are appropriately placed on the site, and we did a publication of the planning commission agenda in the Pike's Peak Courier, and those are the requirements for public notice, and they've been satisfied. This zone, just like before, is the Neighborhood Commercial Zone District, and again, the intent of the Neighborhood Commercial Zone District is a commercial designation for commercial development. This slide is, again, difficult to read, but it just lays out what the outright permitted uses that could occur on this site. For instance, without any kind of a hearing in front of this commission, you could do something like a bank on this particular property, you could do a sports club, you could do a vet clinic, you could do a pet shop, you could do auto parts sales, you could do a childcare center, beauty shop, retail sales, appliance repair, those types of uses are outright permitted and would be subject to simply an administrative review. Again, the applicant is proposing a conditional use at this time for a nursing home, nursing home, home for the aged, those, those types of- home, home for the aged, those types of facilities. Other conditional uses that could occur on this site are professional warehousing, storage, office, wholesale, wholesale grocery store, for instance, a restaurant. You could have a parking lot. Even dwelling units, detached dwelling units are conditional uses within the Neighborhood Commercial Zone District. A church, a hospital, a broadcasting station, TV station, auto wash, repair, auto sales, amusement, entertainment center, commercial greenhouse. Those are all other conditional uses that could occur on this site. The application before us is for a nursing home conditional use. Again, the NC Zone District requirements includes things like height. Again, the applicant is proposing to fall within, below the 35-foot maximum height requirement. The applicant does meet all of the requirements for the setbacks, 25 foot from the front, eight feet from the side, and 15 feet next to the Suburban Residential Zone District, which is to the north of this site. The applicant complies with the frontage requirements of a minimum of 40 feet, which exists. Parking requirements, 17 stalls are provided and are adequate. Fencing, shrubbery, signage are all in compliance. The applicant is proposing fees in lieu for the sidewalk adjacent to Glendale Ave, Glendale Drive, I'm sorry, and that is adequate as far as staff is concerned. Landscaping is adequate in terms of what is proposed. Staff does find compliance with all of the limitations in the NC Zone District as proposed by the applicant. There are numerous standards that staff reviewed for this application, with respect to this application. The first one are the 11 CUP standards, the conditional use permit standards. Again, the need of the project, staff does find that there is a need for an assisted living facility in Woodland Park, that this is the first facility of its kind within our jurisdiction. The assisted living facility next to the hospital is within Teller County, is not within the City of Woodland Park. So this is the first facility of its kind in the city. Staff does find that there is no injury or impact to the public health and welfare if this use were approved, that there is no injury or impact to property values, that the application as proposed and the buildings and structures and the site development would harmonize with the existing buildings, both residential and commercial, and with the existing uses that occur in the neighborhood. Staff does find compliance with all applicable city plans, objectives, policies, and strategies within those city plans, compliance with all the city regulations, compliance with the traffic study. The applicant does, this proposal will produce, again, less traffic than if it were developed as contemplated in 2004 as office and commercial, retail substantially less traffic as an assisted living facility. No impact to drainage. The applicant had submitted drainage report and has been reviewed by our public works department and is adequate and sufficient to deal with surface drainage. Water, sewer, and wastewater have all been adequately addressed by the application, by the applicant in his application. Again, the, this proposal will be subject to approval of connection and extension of the City of Woodland Park sewer line, and that will be necessary prior to any operation of any of the units within this assisted living facility. There is current opportunity to connect to the water service, and waste will be handled internally within the operation of the building. There are no hazards on site, nor does this proposed use create any hazards. And staff did review the architectural design guidelines and finds that the applicant has done a lot with respect to the design of the exterior building and the design on the site to mitigate impacts. Also with this application is a site plan review, since it is an entirely new project. And with the site plan review standards, you see a lot of overlap with the conditional use permit requirements. I'll just touch on them briefly here. Staff does find, again, compliance with all of the city plans, all the policies, objectives, and strategies of those city plans. Staff does find compliance with the city regulations, including the grading, a grading permit will be, a grading permit will be required with this application and is an administrative process. Erosion control will have to be proposed. The design, again, the architectural design is part of the CUP standards, and staff does find compliance with all of the design requirements in terms of the materials and the design of the building and the height. Parking was reviewed and found to be compliant. Tree retentions, there is a section in the municipal code that deals with a tree retention strategy. That section of the code does ask for reasonable compliance, reasonable retention of trees where feasible, so it's not hard and fast. There will be a lot of trees that do come down with this proposal. There's a strip of trees I'll show you again on the aerial photo that will come down. But the applicant in good faith is proposing to relocate as many trees as possible within the site, and he does have a proposal for an extensive landscaping plan that will reposition trees. Staff's also requiring that he add trees along Glendale Drive so that will mitigate some of the views from the surrounding neighbors to the north and the east. And staff's also requiring that the applicant maintain all trees within the right-of-way, and they'll be obligated to maintain all trees within their site as well. Staff found compliance with all of the lighting regulations. The lighting proposed by the applicant is all downcast and shielded. No objections to the site layout. And again, the architectural qualities are sufficient as far as staff is concerned and compliance with the standards. Traffic was another CUP standard as well that overlaps here, and staff finds compliance with the traffic requirements. There will be less traffic with this proposal, and staff does not see an impact to the neighborhood or the traffic patterns based on approval of this proposal. Staff finds compliance with all of the topographical soils, drainage, environmental features on the site. There are no hazardous or environmental features on this site. There's no streams or creeks or any of that, those types of features. Again, water, sewer, wastewater, air quality, no impacts. And these are, again, standards that we're dealt with as part of the CUP. Fire and safety hazards, there are none that staff could identify or that the applicant identified. And staff does find compliance and that this proposed use is compatible with the residential and the commercial character of the neighborhood and the surrounding uses. So those are the site plan review standards. With respect to the vacation of the Village Terrace right-of-way, what we look at, when we look at the vacation of any public right-of-way, is its effect on things like utilities in the right-of-way, whether or not emergency services can still access the site if we vacate the road, whether or not road construction feasibility is impaired by this vacation, whether or not access to a budding lots is impaired, whether or not there's any impact to area traffic patterns and/or adjacent landowners, and the type of input we get from adjacent landowners. Staff does believe that there are no impacts that have, that cannot be mitigated with respect to vacating this road right-of-way. Nobody will be cut off. There will be an easement that's reserved in the location of the existing right-of-way that will maintain all of the public utilities and access to the two vacant lots that are at the northeast corner of this particular subdivision. And staff does recommend approval of the Village Terrace right-of-way. So in very small print is my recommendation for approval. Staff's recommendation for approval of the conditional use permit and the site plan review to allow for a nursing home, convalescent home, rest home, and home for the aged for a two-building, 50-unit assisted living facility on lots one through four of the Village in Woodland Park. Subject to the following conditions. One, that the applicant submit a saving, a phasing plan, sorry, complete with the disturbance tied to the construction of the north building first and the south building later to the extent feasible. Two, that all signs be approved via a separate sign permit. Three, that prior to the zoning development permit that will be required for construction and site improvements, that the applicant submit a final site plan, complete with legal description and any of the conditions that I'm reading before you now. That we get a final utility and grading plan, that we get a final landscaping plan, complete with an average of one evergreen tree for ever 35 feet along Glendale Drive. And preservation of all existing trees, of all existing street trees within the right-of-way and adjacent to the street to the extent possible. And as many onsite trees as possible as well. Also requiring the submission of final architectural elevations, complete with a full listing of materials and colors. Also requiring compliance with any CDOT approval, if any, and then Northeast Teller County Fire Protection District comments and approval, if any. And then the applicant is going to be subject to impact fees, and those will be required prior to issuance of the zoning development plan. Impact fees might be things like tap, tap fees for the sewer line, stormwater fees, transportation capital fees, a park fee, and a sidewalk in lieu fee for that sidewalk along Glendale. Condition number four, prior to any issuance of a certificate of occupancy for a building permit, staff is requiring that they vacate the lot lines between lots three and four and lot one and two. So instead of having four lots, it will be two lots. Each building will be on its own lot, is what the applicant is proposing. And also that the applicant establish any required easements, which he does intend to do, and which will be taken care of as the vacation, as part of the vacation right-of-way. Finally, condition number five, add to the site plan that trees and landscaping within the right-of-way shall be maintained by the owner. And finally, staff does recommend approval of the Village Terrace right-of-way vacation, subject to approval of the conditional use and site plan review. The applicant is here tonight, and I think in the more effective processing of this particular item, it might be worthwhile to let them speak first, and then we can answer our questions later.
Again, I'll remind you about disclosure of ex parte. We covered that the first time, but just in case if there's any kind of a conflict or whatever, now's the time to speak or forever hold your peace.
Yeah, I have no conflict, but just wanted for the record to say I'm in the near neighborhood of this project on Sunny Glen. I'm acquainted with one of the couples who submitted written comments, Pete and Carol Roberts. And I'm also on a broad neighborhood email list and social network site that's outlined several concerns around this. I've worked with Eric on the charter review committee, but none of these affect my ability to make a decision on this. I've had no conversations with neighbors, Eric, or anyone else on this matter.
Anybody else?
I'm pretty much the same as Peter, and I do know some of the people that wrote the letters as well.
Okay. Any else?
Myself. I live in Sunny Glen, just down the road. I'm on the same social network site and, but I think I can be unbiased.
Mr. Smith, the floor is yours.
All right. Good evening. Eric Smith, 525 Pembroke Drive, Woodland Park, Colorado. Well, I wear a lot of different hats in this project. One is I'm one of two of the property owners, so I'm a partner in the property. We bought the property in 2010. The other hat I wear is I'm a principal of Matrix Design Group, and my firm is involved in the planning and engineering aspects of the property. The third hat I wear is I'm also a, gonna participate in a partnership role on the project. The developers are here tonight, Justin Ballard and Ron Whitner of RTB Development. And they are going to take the project from where it sits today to fruition, starting construction on the first building. And then depending upon how the, how that goes, we think that the second building will definitely be feasible and come online shortly thereafter. I'd also like to start off by saying, and I've said this many times in many other meetings when I've been in a different position, and that is our staff is fantastic. So I wanted to say thank you to Laura. She's done a great job, as always, and I'm not surprised because we've had many great presentations over the years from Sally and her group. So I wanted to say thank you for that. We had a public meeting. There was a point in time that I was looking at grading the site because I needed some material for the apartment project and floated an idea out there that didn't gain much traction. But obviously, we didn't grade the site at that point in time. And I'd been thinking about what are some of the uses that we could have for this piece of property that would be another great development and fill another need in our community. That's when I met Justin. We're working with him on several of these sites around Colorado. I mentioned, hey, what do you think about Woodland Park? He said, boy, I like Woodland Park a lot. And so over the course of a year or so, when we first just started kicking around the idea, here we are tonight. So we're very excited. There's been a lot of time and effort put into this, and it just didn't happen on a whim. So there's been a lot of time and energy into it. We did have a neighborhood meeting. I knew that that would be very important, to have a neighborhood meeting, because I know the neighborhood is very actively involved as it relates to this site and things going on in the neighborhood. We also did a site walk, which I don't know if Laura highlighted that or not, but we went out and did some additional surveying work to try to stake limits of disturbance. And I was not at the site walk, Justin was, but I believe that it went fairly well. So I'm glad that we were able to do that. So we're here tonight to talk about this proposal. A lot of this was covered already, so I won't rehash items. It is, I know it's called nursing home in the code. It's an assisted living facility is the more common term these days. We're looking at two phases. We hope to have phase one under construction very shortly with a springtime or early summer opening. And then the second building would follow, hopefully, open a year later. You know, this model is kind of interesting. It's not a large assisted living facility. I mean, you can drive down Powers in the Cordelia area, and you can see these, you know, five, six, seven-story buildings. And, you know, they've got all kinds of care and whatnot. These are really geared to smaller communities. We're looking at 25 beds each. It's really to, to be a home, to feel like a home. So, you know, there's been a lot of discussion about the SNF that's being built out at the hospital, skilled nursing facility. And I, we do understand that they're looking at doing some assisted living there. But we feel that we're offering a product that, well, first off, the market says that we need 70 to 80 beds here in Teller County. I believe they're talking about maybe 20 beds in that facility for assisted living. There's plenty of room for another 25 or 50 beds in this community. And we believe that we're going to be, be targeting maybe a little different market as it relates to what they're doing there. I think what they're doing there is great. Some of the issues is related to garbage. There's a reason why we have a garage. So phase one is the building that has a garage. Phase two doesn't have a garage. These two buildings are here to work together, basically, you know, so they don't need to necessarily both have a garage. So the garage will be where they house the trash for the entire operation, as well as any biohazard, you know, items that come from, you know, healthcare-type, type of places. And of course, those would be all taken care of per state regulations. We've talked about neighborhood commercial. I don't think I need to go in that too much. It was mentioned that 17 spaces were provided, 17 are required per code. I've got 18 here. It depends how you round. So we can say 18 per code. We're actually providing 20 spaces in the parking lot, and then the driveway to the garage would be another two spaces that could be used by staff. Just to reemphasize, one-story building, 23 feet plus or minus. I mean, it depends how you measure it, from which corner, you know, sometimes the grade changes a little bit. But, you know, we're looking at about 25 feet in height to the ridge line of the highest ridge line on the building. You know, to me, that was very important to have, you know, a building that didn't block views. With the way the grading's gonna be on the site, the gentleman that lives just to the north will hardly know the building's there because I think the, his finished floor is probably higher or just about as high as the ridge line of the, of the first building there. So obviously, maintaining views is a huge thing in our community to Pike's Peak. So what we're offering provides a great view for, for us, as well as protecting the views for the surrounding neighbors. The residential and character of the building, we believe, fits the neighborhood extremely well. It looks like a large home, and we think that it'll fit in great, not only in that area, but with the existing building along with the existing residents. As far as traffic goes, we've talked about that. You know, we're, 797 new trips were associated with lots one through six. That didn't include lot seven, which was another 300 and some odd trips. And that's based on the plan that was approved 2004 and contemplated then. We're looking at 134 new week, new weekday trips. And so we're at about 18, 17% of what was originally approved. All of the transportation improvements are required in the original traffic study, which includes the right-turn lane on Highway 24, the acceleration lane on Highway 24, the extension of the left turn lane at Morning Sun, I think it is. All of those improvements were made in 2005 when the original building was built. So those improvements are, are in place, and obviously, they were put in place to handle much heavier traffic load than what we're proposing. From a drainage perspective, when the original construction was completed, there was an underground detention system that was put in. underground detention system that was put in, and it is large enough to handle the stormwater flow from not just the existing building, but also the construction on lots one through four, along with some retained for five and six if it ever gets to that point. But on lots one through four, there's ample capacity in the existing detention system for the increased runoff. I know it looks like it's a, a lot of buildings and a lot of development on the site. There's about, there's a 49% coverage of buildings, parking, sidewalks, and retaining walls. So 51% of the lot, the lots, a lot one through four, is still open space or lawns or landscaping. So view sheds, we talked about that. Lighting was mentioned. Light pollution, I know is a big item here, and all of the lights are going to be downcast on, on the building, as well as light bollards along the sidewalks. And I believe that some of the lighting details are provided in your packet. Emergency vehicles will work with the local emergency providers to make sure that they're not driving in at midnight with their lights going and their sirens on. It's fairly common that when they go into a residential area at night that they turn sirens off. They don't need to have the sirens. So that's something that our operators will work with them to make sure that we're not disturbing the peace at 2:00 in the morning. Landscaping, we covered. We believe that we've more than met and have exceeded the landscaping requirements, and the conditions that were added were, we find very acceptable, and our goal is to replace trees up on the ridge. And that is it for me. Let's see here. As far as the sanitary sewer goes, let me touch on that. I'm an engineer, you know, I like to talk about these things. We, we have, we've put a plan together. We vetted it even today with the city utility director, Kip Wiley, and he had no comments as it relates to our proposal. We've talked with CDOT. We're meeting all the CDOT criteria for putting the sewer line underneath the road. We're working with Walmart and securing an easement. We've just about got that in hand. We're evaluating the sanitary sewer lift stations to make sure that there's enough capacity in both the lift station for Walmart that they built, along with the lift station up at Village, Woodland Village of the Mobile Home Park. And there's ample capacity for this additional sanitary sewer from both our site, as well as BSI, and their needs for tying into the sewer as well. So our, one of the first, we're either going to begin the construction of the sanitary sewer this year, depending upon when we get started and frost and those type of things, or we're going to do it, do it in the spring. And that will come online prior to COs on the building, and we don't believe that there's anything, anything of issue related to that. As far as the conditions go, we have no issues with any of the conditions. And with that, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to try to answer them, or if you have a question with staff. Thank you very much.
Hi, Eric. Question on the vacation of the easement for Village Terrace. Can you explain why we're doing that?
Yes. So we're vacating the roadway right-of-way because the setback requirements for a public roadway would make it difficult to fit this on the site, and we wanted to try to move the buildings closer to the Village Terrace roadway and further away from Glendale.
And so maintenance of the street and snow plowing would be?
Fall on us. Yeah. And in fact, that's a benefit to the city, in my mind, because otherwise, that's a piece of roadway that the city's required to maintain, snow plow. So it actually is reducing the maintenance requirements of the city.
And another issue. There was speculation what might happen to lots five and six?
None. None at this point.
Eric?
Yeah, you said you, there was 51% open space?
Yes.
Have you taken a look at the mature trees that are in that open space and what's going to happen to them?
Unfortunately, based on the size of the buildings and where the trees are positioned, most, if not all of those trees will be taken down. We plan on replacing those trees with new trees, and, you know, I, I know that that's not something that's, that people want to see happen, but, you know, from a development perspective, it's something that, that occurs. And whether we are here tonight with an assisted living facility, and one of the things that I heard loud and clear when, when I initially had some discussions with the neighborhood was, we want to make sure that we're putting in something that is low-impact. And this is about as low-impact as you can get as it relates to traffic, drainage, you know, well, just low-impact in general related to commercial uses. If you were to, you know, there are a lot of permitted uses that could go on this site and still take down those trees, and, but our goal is to replace those trees and have a mature landscape somewhere to the building that's next door. They have a very nice landscape.
I have a couple of questions. You were talking about the trips, and you talked about weekdays. You did not talk about weekend trips, which is, I would think, when you have your most traffic coming in and out.
Yeah, we looked at weekend. Actually, weekend trips are not any higher than the weekday, average weekday trips. And that's according, I mean, just to be, that's according to the Institute of Transportation Engineers ninth edition manual. So I don't, you know, I haven't gone out and studied others, but that's the benchmark that we use as traffic engineers to generate trips.
And then my second question is, you said that there's going to be 20 parking spaces?
There are 20 parking spaces in the parking lot, yes.
How many employees?
There are 15 employees total, but they're on three different shifts, so there are five employees per shift.
And that's per building?
Well, once the two buildings are built, they, the, the staff works interchangeably. So when?
It'd be double.
It'd be double? Yeah, okay. Five? Or 10? Five each?
So each building would have 20 parking places?
No.
So if you're doubling that, then you've only got 10 parking places for visitors and residents?
Well, residents typically don't have a car, so it's very rare the residents have a car. Most residents that go into assisted living are 85 years of age and up, so that is not an issue. We do have 10 spots available for visitors, and the parking code per the city of Woodland Park is one space for every three beds. So we exceed the amount of parking that's required.
Doesn't quite sound like enough parking.
This Village Terrace is also a very wide street with rollover curbs. It would be very easy to park on-street and still maintain excellent access up and down Village Terrace for overflow parking.
That's a good point. Plus, there are two spots in the driveway that can be utilized.
Okay.
Couple of questions, Eric. I've driven around the site a bunch, and can you give me just a, it's hard to, for me to picture things, but maybe it is a picture. When all this is done, and I'm looking at the site from various points around Glendale, Glendale, which is the most proximate street, what am I going to see? Today, I see this kind of berm, and I see a bunch of trees. And so if I'm walking along the street, for example, at road level, what will I see?
So the road is quite a bit higher, especially as you move north than the existing grade. So the existing grade at the cul-de-sac is about the existing grade of the finished floor of the buildings.
Okay.
So we're going to be cutting on the north side of the property, and the fill will go then to the south side of the property to create a pad for the second building. So the buildings will be sitting down. So when you're walking on the road, you'll be looking down. You'll see the roof. There'll be retaining walls next to the building. You probably won't see those because they're going to be below you. That, the ridge that's there will still, most of that ridge, the highest part of it, will still be in place.
So a lot of the, well, a lot of the trees along that, obviously, along that ridge, and I know we're talking generalizations, will they be still there?
So there are trees?
Will it be a kind of buffer, whether it's existing trees or newly planted trees?
So the existing large mature trees are unfortunately in a place where they're going to, they're going to be impacted.
Okay.
And they're going to come down. There are existing trees along the right-of-way, Glendale. We're not going to mess with those. We've got some existing trees on site that are, we've talked about coming and spading them and probably moving them up top. We do plan, I was talking with Laura today, you know, requirements, one tree for 35 feet of frontage. And we've talked about, instead of just planting one tree and one tree and one tree, to try to clump and cluster trees. And the landscape plan, I think, is in your package, is pretty robust. So our objective is to replant evergreen trees up on that ridge.
Yeah, okay. One or two other quick questions?
Sure.
Sewer line? I'm not an expert in sewer lines, but is there any risk of traffic delays or problems? You know, just again, Reader's Digest version, that's a long way to run a sewer line, it seems, from, he's laughing, from your site to Walmart, somewhere across 24, and then across other areas. Could you just talk a little bit about that?
Yeah, no problem. No problem.
Particularly risk issues?
Yeah.
Highways caving in, things like that?
Yeah. Well, first off, let me say that directional drilling, you guys have all heard about directional drilling as it relates to oil.
Right.
But the same technology, and you see folks running around, I won't mention any names, but you see utility companies running around, you know, doing conduits all over the place. The same technology is what's going to be used here. It's called directional drilling. So what they will do is they will, they'll have a, a small hole, pilot hole, that they'll drill all the way across. We're going to set up on our piece of property, lots one and two, and we're going to drill all the way across underneath the parking lot of BSI, all the way under Highway 24, all the way to Walmart. Then what they do is they put different sized, they call them reamers, on the end of it, and they pull it back, and it keeps making the hole bigger and bigger and bigger. CDOT requires that we put a steel casing underneath the highway, and so once the hole is 24 inches in diameter, they'll pull a steel, 16-inch steel sleeve through, so it goes right-of-way to right-of-way. They come in 20-foot lengths. They weld them together, so it's one continuous, it's going to be 340 feet long, piece of 16-inch steel pipe. Then they pull the eight-inch sewer line through, and they have spacers that they use inside the pipe. There is, obviously, I said there's a 24-inch hole with the 16-inch pipe. They flow fill the voids that takes care of it, and they do this all over the place.
Wow.
So this is not, could I say that there, there's nothing that's ever happened?
Right.
I'm sure there are things that have happened. Global Underground is one of the premier contractors in the state of Colorado that do doorings like this. They just finished the dooring up at the hospital. They did the same exact thing at the hospital. They had to put in the steel sleeve. They had to put in the water line. They had to do everything, and you saw how that went.
And since the staging area for this is on, obviously, your property and near residential resi, you know, places, impact on them, you know, noise, just general comment?
Yeah, it's almost zero. I mean, the machine that they use is, is fairly quiet, and, you know, I mean, we're going to have more, we're going to have noise, normal construction.
Right.
So when the earthmoving is occurring, there's probably the level where there's the most noise during the earthmoving because you've got the heavy-type vehicles. But, you know, during construction, it's like a building a house. I mean, it's very similar.
Okay.
So there'll be no impact. We're working with Walmart. We're securing an easement with Walmart. There'll be another staging area at Walmart. So there'll be no impact to Highway 24 traffic. And CDOT wouldn't allow that.
Yeah. Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome. No, thank you. I love those kind of questions. I'm fascinated by that, too.
Jeff?
Well, Laura, you said you had additional photos.
I had four photos in my presentation. I did have additional photos with my site plan visit, but.
You had mentioned you had a photo showing the trees that would.
Yeah, I have the aerial, and then I had those four photos on my presentation.
Oh, I thought you said you had an additional photo that you were going to present to us.
No.
Okay, I'm sorry. Thank you.
Jeff? Going, going back to the sewer line for a second.
Okay.
I assume that's part of the construction cost?
Yes.
Will that sewer line be part of your line after construction complete, or will that revert to the city?
The city's going to take ownership of it. It'll be in city easements. Kip is, he wants, I mean, he's never said he does not want to take it as a public sewer line.
Would there, would there be an opportunity for the residents in the area to tap into that? As I understand, they're not on the city sewer?
You know, there's a potential. I'll just say this, an eight-inch sewer line, as it relates to the capacity of an eight-inch line, is tremendous. I mean, you can sewer a lot of homes on an eight-inch sewer line. There'll be two factors that will influence that. One is, you know, a few homes or a dozen homes tying in, probably not a big deal. The lift station at some point will become the bottleneck, and I don't know at what level that is. The other thing is just the cost. I mean, the cost of extending sewer, especially with large lots, is pretty cost prohibitive. And in addition to that, anybody that ties on is going to pay $6,000 or so in a tap fee to the city. So in addition to the cost of extending the sewer line and the connections, you've got a tap fee as well.
Okay. Jeff?
Yeah, Eric. Three questions, two related.
Okay.
One, safety. You have a lot of senior people there. Do you have any kind of security? And it's an operational question, I guess, with regard to keeping people from wandering? You're very close to 24.
Justin can answer that. I think I know the answer, but I'll let you.
Name and address? Justin Ballard, 10475 Elizabeth Way, Black Forest, Colorado. The operation is that they're not doing dementia or Alzheimer's care in the facility. It is truly an assisted living care facility. So most of the people have the right to come and go. They're not being barred in or anything like that. So the level of care at which they're handling is not that level in the facility.
Okay. So you don't anticipate wanderers?
Nope.
In the neighborhood and that sort of thing?
No. That would be more for the skilled care facility up the road.
Okay. Thank you. You bet.
Second question. Have you considered the traffic impact on Glen Cove Drive? And have, and related to that, have you thought about, you know, has anybody, city or developer, thought about putting some kind of access to 24 East directly from Glendale? And the reason I ask that question is because, you know, Sunny Glen, that, that drive there tends to be a, a lot of people do a U-turn to get into Glendale, but a lot of people come through Glen Cove to do the same thing.
Right.
And a lot of businesses do the same thing. And I'm thinking of emergency vehicles or other vehicles leaving, leaving to go, wanting to go east on 24, having to use Glen Cove, and then Sunny Glen to get, get east. And Glen Cove has a school bus stop. There are a lot of kids ride their bikes there, so, so, you know, I guess I'm not so concerned about number of trips, but where the trips occurs.
I see.
Yeah, and I.
Is that where it remakes?
If you put up a picture, I don't know whether everybody knows Glen Cove, but no one mentioned it in the, in the presentation.
I think I mentioned it wrongly, but, yeah, I mean, as far as the amount of trips go, we're looking at a total of 134 daily trips, which is, sounds like a lot, but over the course of a day is pretty small. We generally 10%. I was going to pull it up on my computer. I don't have the traffic study right here in front of me. Maybe Laura can find it. The average weekday, or the PM peak hour trips are generally 10%. She'll look up the number there. Borrow that. Yeah, it's actually less than that. So the PM peak hour trips from this site are 12 over the course of an hour. The AM peak hour. The AM peak hour trips are eight over the course of an hour. So it's a very small amount of traffic. As far as, has anybody looked at doing something relative to Highway twenty-four and Glendale? As far as a full movement access, I'd love one there, that'd be great. The chances of that happening are zero. CDOT has a highway access management plan. I've talked to Valerie Swart, who is the access manager for CDOT for Region Two, and she said that in all of her history of eighteen, I think it's eighteen or twenty-two years, I can't remember, it's been a while, she said that there's been two of those type of cases that she's seen go forward. They take years of time, lots of legal dollars, and at the end of the day, usually are not approved. You're correct, there will be some U-turns. I've made that U-turn many, many times. I've owned the property for almost five years, and I've gone to the property at all different times of the day and days of the week. I've made that U-turn without really any consequence. I've also driven the other way, where you drive by the RE/MAX and up the hill and make the turn that way. So what we're proposing here from a traffic perspective is about as small amount of traffic that you can have for development at this location. If we were to do retail, which would be a permitted use, it would fall within the traffic study that was completed in oh four, and there could be eight hundred trips associated with lots one through six. So we're proposing something that has seventeen-
Would you consider signage on Glen Cove that warns people of children in the area?
We could talk to the city-
I mean, it's not a sign there, I mean, you got a school bus stop and a lot of kids around there.
If there was a warning sign or something, that's something we could talk about, putting, I, you know, we couldn't obviously put any sign related to our business, because that'd be an offshoot of something.
No, it's probably a city question, but it seemed to me that would be the least we could do.
Right, and the Public Works Department has looked at their traffic study and has considered the traffic on twenty-four and Sunny Glen and Glendale and Glen Cove, and all of those things, and didn't make any suggestions or requirements at this time, based on this proposed use. That doesn't mean a resident, any resident can go to the Public Works Department and say, "We'd like some special signage for the protection of our children," or for parking, or any of that, it can happen at any time.
Yeah, so I have.
Okay, I have two questions, comments. Can an emergency vehicle make that U-turn?
Oh, ambulance, absolutely.
They can do a U-turn?
Yeah.
And then also, what about having, I don't know if you can do this, can you request that the emergency vehicles try to turn at the stoplight at, for, you know, where you turn to Walmart? Because you can take the back way there, and then you'd have that light, instead of making U-turns.
Oh.
I don't have the-
Yeah, I think they're gonna take the most direct. I don't think we can necessarily request or tell them where they need to go or how they need to go. I think we'll want to meet with them and say, "Listen, you know, we don't want sirens on in the middle of the night," and those types of things. And, you know, I've driven down Highway twenty-four in the middle of the night, and, you know, going the other way might be an ambulance, and they're not, their sirens aren't on, because they don't need them on, their lights will be on. So, and I think the other way is so circuitous, I've driven that, I, it's pretty circuitous.
I think taking that path from Walmart makes, ambulances drive through a lot of private neighborhood, a lot of area where kids are. I think the most direct route is come right off twenty-four, go up a block, and you're there. Rather than going through those curves that you've got in those left-hand, right-hand turns, you have to make with an ambulance running. I think that's more of a jeopardy to the kids in the area than coming right out to twenty-four.
Yeah, that's a good point, yeah.
And one more question for you, Eric.
Yep.
Pedestrian access to the site?
Mm-hmm.
And we're talking about fees and new sidewalk. Do you have any concerns, or are you addressing pedestrian access at all?
So, I thought about sidewalks that gone along Glendale. You know, my issue with sidewalks, in my mind, is always like, okay, so you build a sidewalk, where's it go? You know, it just stops and doesn't go any further, and never, really never will, unless the city decides they wanna put sidewalks in. The other issue with sidewalks along Glendale specifically is, there's a nice drainage rail there today, it's very stable, it's, you know, it's well-done. Once you start adding sidewalk, now you gotta figure out, well, where can I put the sidewalk relative to the drainage? You know, now, now should I put the drainage in a pipe, which I don't necessarily think we should do, or do you have to put curb and gutter along the side? Now you're urbanizing things, you got runoff, stormwater runs off faster, so it, so I approached the city and said, you know, "I would rather see us do fees and new sidewalk." I mean, we're gonna pay the same amount either way, but I think it's better, overall, from an environmental perspective, not to put in a sidewalk that really's not gonna be used by a whole lot of people, because there's just no connectivity anywhere else. We do have a sidewalk relative to the existing building that's on the, I guess that's the west side of Village Terrace, and then we'll have sidewalks, of course, related to our site, but-
I'm seeing adjacent to your parking area mostly, and I guess looks at some rear exit doors, something like that.
Right, right.
As far as access, we were sent a discussion about parking and being, using Village Terrace for surplus parking. We have lot sevens fully developed with curb and gut, or sidewalks, and there's even a, I believe, a crosswalkers, a curb cut for a crosswalk across that space. Again, it goes nowhere, but we have this development, we talked about people wandering, while they're now restricted in their access, if they wanna go for a walk, where do they go? Down the street?
Yeah, generally, there's not a lot of folks that are walking, you know, they're more confined to the local-
All some direct experience with those facilities, and that's, I disagree with your comments.
Okay, that's fine.
So there are, no, no discussion about improving Village Terrace, or the frontage along Village Terrace with sidewalks?
We, well, like I said, there's already an existing sidewalk, and we're gonna have a sidewalk, we have sidewalk that ties into that via the cul-de-sac, so there is a way that somebody can walk through the cul-de-sac, which once again, has very low traffic over to the sidewalk, and then they'll walk to Village Terrace, or to Glendale, and that'll be it.
But future development, lot five and six, could be a commercial application, correct?
I have no idea at this point.
We have no idea, so-
I have no idea.
I understand.
Yeah.
But in speculation, it could be something that, if they're putting in sidewalk and required, it makes sense of that. I'm just questioning why we don't have sidewalks on your property.
Okay.
Anybody else?
Can we ask of the city? What, when you say that it won't affect property values, you just kinda make the statement, is there any analysis that goes behind that?
No.
So I thought.
Okay, at this point in time, we'll, we'll open up the public hearing, or public comment. Sharon, you were on the first list, are you still here?
Just, no, she's not.
No? Phyllis?
Hi, my name's Phyllis Cahill, I live at one eighty-seven Glendale Drive, directly across from the proposed assisted living. I brought some images, but I don't know exactly if I can project them. I brought three of some and one of others. Can I just pass them around? I just wanted to make it very clear what trees were going to go. This first one is a panorama of generally the four lots, and you can see in the foreground all the trees that would be affected. Pass that over.
That picture was taken from the cul-de-sac?
I went to the center of the cul-de-sac and set up a tripod and just clicked around. Yeah. I counted from a Google map, I didn't go on the property and count, but there's about fifty or so, maybe more, trees that we would be affected by this development, and many of those are the really large, you know, fifty feet or more tall trees that we appreciate and that, that block the view of whatever will be built there. I also brought three copies of this. This is showing the footprints, the rooftops of the two proposed buildings and the parking lot, and the one tree, the one tree that would be saved, in addition to the little trees that are along the right-of-way. So you can see how really large these buildings are, even larger than Tweed's, and much, much larger than the houses, of course. But in my opinion, and I think a lot of this is subjective, whether this fits in with the existing neighborhood, whether trees are actually retained, I, you know, one tree, one tree out of fifty, is that retention? I really don't think so. And is it harmonious? Those are, that's a subjective question. In my mind, these are nice-looking buildings, I would like to see on the, on the parts that face the highway that they look as nice as the front of the building. Because from what I can see, the back of the building is more stucco, and the front of the building has more of the fake rock, and has more bump outs, it's more complicated looking, it's more attractive looking. Tweed's, I think, has the fake rock all the way around the building, like maybe a quarter up or something, but it adds to the appeal of the buildings. So, did you wanna copy that? We live directly across, as I said, and we walk the street, and we drive the street, and so, I mean, it's right there, it's gonna be right there in our face, and we really don't have anything against assisted living, it seems like probably the best choice for that land. And this other drawing I brought shows in green the trees. Now, they have, they have the trees drawn in gray, and they did add the trees that were missing, and I appreciate that, but this shows very clearly the trees in green, and you can see the ones that would be affected. And when I wrote my letter, when we wrote our letter, my husband and I, we submitted two alternate drawings, trying to think of ways to retain the trees on the north and the east side, the big trees, to protect the neighborhood and protect the beauty of the area. And for various reasons, those two drawings were rejected, but I came up with a third drawing, and I brought it today. I wish I could see it. It incorporates buildings on all six lots, it has fifty-five rooms, twenty-two parking spaces, and two terraces, and it keeps a lot of the bigger trees. I mean, the land is kinda like a saucer, it's lowest at the bottom, and then it gets really high on the one side. So there's nature retaining walls, and I understand there has to be certain allotment for fire code or something, I don't know, we can't have trees exactly right next to the building, so this is my, this is sketch number three. That's basically all I had to say, I just, I'm really dismayed, disappointed that those trees would all have to go. Thank you.
Jeff Cahill, one eight seven Glendale Drive. I also own Quality Science Designs at this same location, and the reason I bring that up is because three years ago, when we bought our property, I knocked on other neighbors' houses and told them what I intended to do over the next couple of years, once my house had sold, that I had built in Falcon, and I was going to expand the size of my garage and have a bigger operation, so, but it would not impact the neighborhood so far as aesthetics, because it would be designed in the same architectural style, enciding and accoutrements that my house had. Unfortunately, the house didn't sell, didn't sell, didn't sell, and finally this year it did. And we've broken ground, and we are partially into construction, and we went through all the hoops, just as these gentlemen have gone through, to get the city's approval with a setback in the use and et cetera, so we wouldn't impact the neighborhood. In that attempt, I had to sign chapter and verse on what I would and wouldn't do, analysis of operation, the noises I wouldn't make, the smells that I wouldn't create, and et cetera. And at a meeting last month, the gentleman talked to me and asked, answered specifically my question regarding kitchens. Now, my wife and I, she's intimated, we walk the streets, and we take our exercise by hiking up Glendale and Sun Valley and morning sun, we go up into, gosh, not as far as high as King's Crown, but we have on occasion, but when we come down from this clean air excursion, we get impacted terrifically by Denny's. And Denny's, there's nothing against the restaurant itself, but they do have a deep fat fire, and it does emit a very heavy odor. And I came to Woodland Park to escape the fucking diesel fumes that were going to be happening out in Falcon and Benwell's Ranch. And to come up here and be subjected to that potential again is something that I find intolerable, and that's something I'm going to fight against if we can't get some clarification, instead of a cursory little mention about air quality in these proposals, about not having specifically deep fat fire in these particular residences. Now, there's three meals a day, they've intimated that in each building, they're gonna have two basically kitchen-type units, which are going to be like what we typically have in our homes. And if they do that, then that's fine, but it kind of boggles my mind, if you have twenty-five residents and you have two kitchens, basically operating to supply three meals, where are the fumes going to go? Are they gonna have a HEPA filter or something else, and is there another going to be an opportunity for deep fat frying, et cetera? So I would like to see some sort of in writing recourse, we can come back on and say, "Look, you signed an agreement that you wouldn't have this kind of emission, and basically, we're coming to you now, sitting in your boardroom and calling you on the carpet, because you violated this if this ever happens in the future." So that's the only thing I wanted to say relative to the fumes. I have nothing against the assisted living facility, I helped care for my mother for eight years when she was in one, it's, it's close to my heart, I think the architectural design is wonderful, surely leaps some bounds above the warehouses we were hit with a couple years ago as a proposal. But I think that the impact on the streets, as the question, and you had, I think especially Mr. Hartsfield, putting in a sidewalk, we hike that road in Glendale Drive every day, and if you go up two houses, and one Steve Allen's is right next to this property, and then the lady whose first name is Megan, they have a direct drop-off from that street, there's no place to put a sidewalk if you had continued it upwards, so having it along Glendale Drive across from our house would not be practical at all. I mean, we, we do a lot of hiking up there, and it's, a lot of people's access up to the higher, higher streets is on that edge of the road. So, anyway, that's all I had to say relative to that, I really don't have any big objections to what Mr. Smith is going to do, I think it's a needed, a needed addition to the neighborhood, so I give him kudos for coming up with this.
Thank you. You bet. Sally, how does code enforcement tie in if there are noxious or fumes that bother the area? How do, how would code enforcement work with that? I know we have things like that in our ordinance.
There are very general terms, so our code enforcement officer would go out and assess the situation and discuss the issue with the property owner, and perhaps come up with some options to try to reduce those impacts. It, it would be difficult, though, to place a citation on someone for fumes if they have a normal kitchen. I mean, you could have your neighbor cooking, grilling on their porch, and create odors or, so you have to be reasonable about it, and there are fumes created simply from the highway, you have exhaust fumes that probably impact this neighborhood on a greater basis. on a greater basis.
I understand what he's saying. You don't want something that permeates the whole neighborhood. And I understand that. And you understand that, too. You guys got to work that together, I would think. Anybody else would like to come up and say something? That forgot to sign up? Name, address, and all that good stuff.
Thank you, Mr. Sherman. My name is Paul Combs. I live with Denise over there at 193 Glendale Drive here in Woodland Park. And I have a few questions. Some of these are going to be pretty much pro forma in nature. They might amount to nothing more than what's your favorite color? But I'd still need to ask them anyway because some people that I represent, who could not be here tonight, have asked me to add to bring those questions up. One is in Minnesota, one is in Illinois. And a few of them, I'm thinking, probably just couldn't tear themselves away from Dancing With The Stars. So they asked me to do it instead. I do want to say that I spent half of my adult life overseas. I've got no experience whatsoever in city, county, or state government. I worked in the intelligence business for twenty-nine years for a Department of Defense. And so it's kind of a thrill. After having taken the oath to support and defend the Constitution against enemies, foreign and domestic, to finally get up here and participate, even in a very minor, almost curiously way, in the democratic process. So thank you very much for the opportunity. I would like to ask first off, and perhaps Steve Allen over there, Reverend Allen, he's most impacted by this. And he asked a question that's pretty close to what I'm going to ask, but I want to bring it up here. There's going to be a total in two or three steps for the northern retaining wall. Two, I think, two steps down, totaling about twenty feet, if I'm correct on that? Twelve or fourteen. And Reverend Allen was concerned at the previous meeting whether he might just sleepwalk out of his house in the middle of the night and fall down over that, or whether there would be some sort of protection fence, something like that, to prevent that from happening. Let's say he has relatives over and they have small children. You don't want the child suddenly disappearing from sight over a fourteen-foot precipice. And so I just want to ask that question first off.
We'll answer.
Okay, that's, okay, question number one. And I also want to ask the people who are here, who are concerned about this, who came here specifically for this purpose, to just raise your hand if you're here for this reason. Okay. So there are more people here than just me and the people who are watching Dancing With The Stars. I also want to say that I have no opposition at all. And the people who've asked me to speak for them have also said they have no opposition at all to the concept, and I want to use the word "concept," of an assisted living facility. Obviously, there's a need for it. It's certainly a lot better choice than many of the other possible projects that could be offered up here tonight. My only opposition is that it appears that they're trying to maximize their profits by maximizing the number of trees they're going to eradicate. They're leaving, as far as we can determine, one adult tree. So that's something I'd just like to have them respond to later on. The traffic study that they referred to is a 2004 traffic study. And I know some people have already mentioned the age of it. It's eleven years old. And as everyone in this room is aware, the city government is very concerned about increases in traffic, certainly since eleven years ago. I mean, I wasn't even living here eleven years ago. And everyone's seen the increase in traffic. The city right now is eyeing, I believe it's a total of twenty-two proposals at one time, different ideas that Mr. Osbach has been toying around with, trying to find some sort of way to ameliorate the traffic situation here. And using eleven-year-old traffic data, I think, just leads us down the wrong path. We're not really working with up-to-date data. And I just want to emphasize that. That's more of a comment than a question. And I didn't bring a printout of this. I forgot to do it, I apologize. But I'd like to ask the planning director, just a direct question here, if I could just briefly, just a yes or no question. I believe I ran across in city ordinances in my endless boring search, this is better than Samanex, believe me, that roads, sidewalks, parking lots, and retaining walls do not constitute landscaping. Is that a correct statement?
Do not constitute...
I'm sorry to put you on the spot like that. I mean, it asks for an encyclopedic memory, but...
Do not constitute...
Yeah, I believe it says, pardon, yeah, "Roads, sidewalks, parking lots, and retaining walls do not constitute landscaping." Is that true? To the best of me, we're not going to lynch you after this if you're wrong, but...
Yeah, I would have to look to see exactly what the definition of landscaping. Because in my opinion...
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to put you on the spot. Actually, it's my fault for not bringing it...
Retaining walls oftentimes are part of the landscape. Parking lots, no necessarily. But they often have landscaping integrated into the parking lot. So, and sidewalks will oftentimes have landscaping integrated. And they are part of the streetscape. So there are many different ways of interpreting that.
Yeah, I know that in speaking with you in the past, you've lamented that some of the ordinances are either vague or just watered down and you wish that they were a little bit sharper and more specific. So it's a judgment call, then, if I understand you correctly, about whether retaining walls could be considered as landscaping? Okay, so it's a judgment call, okay.
Yes.
That's acceptable, thank you. And I apologize for not bringing that or I wouldn't have to ask you the question in the first place. I also want to say that my wife and I, that's her in the red back there, took a one-hundred-foot measuring tape and took it on ourselves to cross the street. And we were measuring the stakes that are labeled "limits of disturbance." Are they supposed to be twenty-five feet from the street, I think? The offset, I think?
We can answer that.
Oh, so, okay. What we discovered, that these stakes, which apparently were surveyed, we watched surveyors put them in, so we're thinking it was a professional job. But their distance from the west edge of Glendale Drive is really inconsistent. If twenty-five feet is what they're trying to get, and I'm assuming it is, because some of them are right on twenty-five feet, some of them are as much as four feet toward Glendale Drive, to what you might say to their advantage. Anywhere from a foot and a half to twenty-five feet, twenty-four feet. So it seems to me that maybe they would need to go back and resurvey this. Might be something I'd like to recommend to them. Also, I'm going to ask, is there a conservation easement around that property? Your own drawings and I brought...
We can answer your questions.
Okay.
Just keep going.
Because the drawings that were submitted by them, and I'm not saying you drew them, but somebody drew them. One, two of them are labeled Matrix Corporation, one is somebody else. And some of the drawings say that there's a twenty-five-foot conservation easement. Some of the drawings say that there's not. If there's a twenty-five-foot conservation easement, then I brought a copy of the ordinance here. It seems pretty, this is one of the really specific ordinances. It says there's nothing else allowed there except vegetation. As it is, they're obviously intending to build, especially on the north side, about twelve or thirteen feet from Steve Allen's property line. And if there's a conservation easement, then that would move their retaining wall back to about twenty-five feet. If there is a conservation easement.
We'll explain.
Pardon?
We'll explain.
Okay. Okay, and I think, I think that's it. All right. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Anybody else?
My name's Denise Franco and I live at 193 Glendale Drive across from the assisted living site. Our house sits up relatively high on the road as you go on up. I actually think our back patio, or actually our front deck, sits actually higher than Mr. Allen's house does. And when they start excavating down and eradicating all the trees, we're going to have a nice view of basically a top of a building. Mr. Smith had just mentioned that they were going to, I guess they were speaking to Loar about grouping trees along Glendale Drive. My question is, are we going to have a say as to where these will go? Because some of it, there's a big, kind of like a culvert drainage area. I don't think they'll be able to plant trees right there. But will we have a say in where some of these trees will go? And what size are they talking about? Because the trees they're going to be taking down are huge trees, you know, twenty-five, fifty feet or more, roughly. And are they going to, are they talking about replacing them with little, you know, six-foot trees? Also regarding the traffic, as you know, Highway 24, if there's an accident or some event going on, Highway 24 through Woodland Park shuts down. All those cars, especially if they're locals, they know to turn at the RE/MAX building, go down that street, and hook up onto Glendale Drive and go up and loop around and bypass the traffic. Walking that every day to check mail, there's the school bus with kids and everything else. If 24 shuts down, you're going to have even more traffic with a nursing home coming in and having people coming to visit their relatives. So my question is, is that really going to impact even more on the traffic than there currently is now that they're talking about? Because 24 does back up. That's why we're having discussions about trying to solve that problem. So I guess that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Good evening, my name is Hillary Labarre, 185 Glendale Drive, Woodland Park, 80863. Going back to the whole traffic issue, I live right on the corner of Glen Cove and Glendale. So my home will be the most impacted by any traffic that is going to be associated with either of the projects that are being recommended. I know there's not a lot technically or legally that we can actually do about it. But I do know that I can ask you to take action to require that signage be put up before this plan is approved. And the signage that I'm interested in having would be for all large trucks. I know that the regular cars, there's probably not a lot we can do about. But on Glen Cove, when you're heading down to the Springs, there is no acceleration lane. So that road, Glen, it's not Glen Cove, it's the road that runs right up through RE/MAX. I can't think of the name of it.
Sunny Glen.
Sunny Glen. That, we're going to get really backed up there when we're trying to get on the highway to head to the Springs, especially if we're stuck behind construction trucks because they can't accelerate on that little patch to get onto 24 as quick as a Honda can. And they're also turning directly on to and into the left fast lane. So it's really going to jam us up. And I would recommend that we put signage up at the corner of Glen Cove and Glendale. Or, you know, in the places that it makes the most common sense for large trucks to know, including construction trucks, to know that they need to come in on Glendale where the current Tweed's building is and access the construction that way. It's still going to impact me no matter what because I'm right there. But it would cut down on the fact that we have at least six kids that ride their bikes up Glen Cove every single day. And they're little kids. They're not, you know, eighteen, seventeen, sixteen-year-olds. They're like ten, eleven, eight, nine. They walk their dogs. All of our neighbors walk our dogs up Glen Cove and Glendale, too. But, and the bus stop is right there at Glen Cove and...
Sunny Glen.
Sunny Glen. And so all the kids get off there and they're walking there. And if we have those huge construction trucks that are backed up or just delivery trucks, trucks in general, trying to get onto 24 to head down to the Springs, they can't accelerate. We're all going to be backed up there. And I just think that there's something we could do signage-wise. I know you have the authority, much faster and much easier than I as an individual to walk into the traffic department and try to state my case to them. And I know you all carry the authority to require a sign before this project is even approved. So I would also like to ask, and I believe you have the authority, to require an updated traffic study before this project is approved because that study is ages old. And they probably didn't anticipate that right now we have at least thirty thousand cars daily that run up 24. I'm not concerned about 24. I bought my house knowing it's right there. I hear the noise, I see the traffic. What I'm concerned about is my house on Glen Cove and on Glendale and how that's going to be impacted. Because it's going to be greatly impacted. It's going to be impacted by the fire trucks, by the ambulances, by visitors, by the workers, and especially by construction. There's going to be a lot of heavy trucks coming in and out. Those are the most important points I wanted to make. And I'm not opposed to the project at all. I've spoken with the gentleman privately and I'm glad that they're bringing it into the community. I think the design is nice. I think it's needed. I'm sorry to see all the trees go, but it is private property. If they want to clear the whole thing and have the right to do it, they can. However, the traffic is not private property. It's city property. And I would like to see us be able to resolve as much impact as possible to that. So, thank you.
Thank you. Last call. I know, you got to come up here and do it. You got to come do it.
I'm Megan Poe. I live at 196 Glendale. Loar, you said something that really concerns me. You said there's no basis for your statement that there's zero impact on property values. So I'd like to know if there's anything else in here with no basis.
Typically, what we get is we get a letter from a Realtor that provides some sort of information with respect to property values or the value of the development. And we didn't get that with this application. But in my professional experience, looking at the design of the construction, the site that is going to be impacted, the adjacent impacts, and just based on my own professional experience in the planning field for over twenty years, I believe, my estimate is that there will be an increase in property values based on this development.
And you can say that you have either that experience or that backup for everything else that you say complies?
Yes, I have twenty years of experience in planning.
Then I have no problem, as long as you feel that you've done your homework. It sounded kind of like you hadn't.
We just don't get, we didn't get the typical analysis that we got for most applications.
Okay.
Thank you. I know, it's contagious. It isn't. Okay.
Pete Labarre, not a resident of Woodland Park, 617 County Road, 281. Just on the point of the trucks coming up and down Glendale and Glen Cove and out Sunny Glen, thank you. Truck coming across the highway at 24 at Glen Cove. Glen Dale, Glen...
Sunny Glen.
Sunny, whatever it is, RE/MAX. RE/MAX, thanks, John. At RE/MAX creates an issue just trying to cross the highway. There's not enough room to come across in that little span. There's a stop sign, but if you have a semi, delivery vehicles, actually tandem axle vehicles, they actually end up sticking out on the westbound side of 24. And they're turning into the, into the passing lane going eastbound on 24. Make it a requirement, make it a condition of approval that they go up and do a turn up at, up at the traffic light at Walmart. At Denny's. At Denny's, where we have pleasant smells.
You don't mind them coming by your place?
I don't mind them coming by our place. Hopefully, they'll stop in and have lunch. But I think it is, seriously, this is an issue. My son, daughter-in-law, live there. And if you allow those truck traffic, truck traffic to go down that road, they will because they're going to take the shortest path rather than going up to, up to, turn around at the light.
Thanks, Pete, thank you. Rebuttal time? We'll close the public hearing. Now you may have the applicant's rebuttal. And I wrote the question down as well, Mr. Smith.
Well, I tried to take good notes. If I missed something, please jump in.
If I missed something, please jump in. And I do want to say I appreciate all the comments and the professionalism in which they were delivered. Tree, I mean, there are some themes, obviously, through here, trees is one of them. I don't like to see trees cut down any more than the next person. And, you know, we own the property, we're developing, 50% of the property is going to be impervious area, whether it's a building, or a retaining wall, or a parking lot. 50% of the, of the lots are going to be landscaped. That more than exceeds the open space requirements for this type of project. For us to be able to make this product work, we've got to have a certain footprint for these buildings, and so we've done our best to be able to try to site them in a way that works. I looked at a lot of different alternatives as it relates to how these buildings could sit and whatnot, and what we have, believe it or not, is about the most efficient way to make this fit on this site. We are not overbuilding, given the fact that we have two-plus acres of land, and we have 50% of it that's going to be landscaped or open space. So, yes, there are trees. Unfortunately, I wish the trees were closer to the road. They were closer to the road, we'd be keeping all the trees, everybody'd be happy, and I'd be happy because we wouldn't have to replace them with a lot of, you know, new trees. So, trees are expensive. But we are committed, and we are going to replace those trees, similar to a lot of developments in town. I mean, we have a lot of developments that, you know, we have to cut down trees. So, I don't know what else to say about that. As it relates to the back of the building, I think that was a good question. We're going to carry the same themes as it relates to stone and stucco to the back of the building as well as the front of the building. You will see the back of the building for building number two. Building number one, you'll see the, you know, the front of the building obviously faces the street, even though, once building two's built, you'll see the back of building two. So, but it will be done well. As far as the alternate drawings, I really appreciate Phyllis's planning, and I would love to try to see if we could make something like that work, but, you know, the issue with this site is it's got grade. I mean, we live in Woodland Park, there's a lot of grade in a lot of places. That road is at about 10% grade. We look at that and you say, well, that's not that much. But to go back to sidewalks, ADA requires that sidewalks have to be at a 5% grade. If they're steeper than 5%, the maximum grade they can be is 8.33%, which is 1 inch and 12. But you can only have that for 30 feet, and Ken can attest to that. Then you have to have a flat area, then you can go 8.33% for another 30 feet. So, if you put a sidewalk along that road, it doesn't even meet ADA standards. The same thing is true if we try to take a building and face that first building towards the road. You've got this road that's climbing up, and you're trying to build a building that's one level. It's not as if we can stair-step this building. It has to be on a flat pad, because it has to be a single level. Obviously, elderly folks don't want to climb a bunch of stairs. So, trying to reorient the building to have it face the road just doesn't work. It just doesn't work. Let's see here. I'm going to let Justin talk about kitchens, but we'll come back to that. As far as the fencing, the retaining wall, I think that's a fair comment. I think that's something that we can address. We don't want people, obviously, on his property to come and fall over the retaining wall. We can look at doing a split rail fence or something on top of the retaining wall and tie it to some landscaping. So, I think that's something that we can work out between the city as well as the property owner there to the north. Mr. Allen? Let's see what else. I'm going to come back to traffic, because that's another. As far as the conservation easement goes, and Sally can jump in here, the conservation easement is required if it's a residential development. The conservation easement is not required if it's a commercial development. This is a commercial development. This is not a residential development. So if we're doing single-family residential homes, or duplexes, or something along that line, a 25-foot conservation easement would be required. That was on the plat, and it is a plat note that was approved, and I don't have the plat here with me, but it is a plat note on that plat. So the conservation easement does not exist for any type of commercial endeavor. As far as the limits of disturbance with the stakes, building setbacks, the requirement for building setback is 25 feet along the frontage of Glendale. If you look at the site plan, you'll see that we have some building corners that are 100, well, I don't know, maybe 60, 70 feet away from Glendale. We're pretty, the stakes that are out there are limits of disturbance stakes. So, that's the dirt work, the excavation, the retaining walls, that type of thing. It is not the building. So the building is further away from Glendale, the buildings. You have some distances there?
Uh...
Yeah. I'm going to test my eyesight here. Yeah, so we show one of the building corners to be 100 feet away, depending upon how you measure it, it's perpendicular to the right-of-way line. Another one's 40 feet, give or take. Another one's, looks like it's 50. And then we do have one corner, the very, the building number two, the very southeast corner is right at the 25 feet.
And just to clarify, Eric, the area of disturbance would include where you stop your grading?
Correct.
And that could take place within the 25-foot setback? Is that correct?
Yes.
So retaining wall or grading could happen closer than 25 feet to the street?
Correct, correct. And we try to keep retaining walls and everything, you know, as close, you know, as far away as we could from the, from the roadway. So, you know, our goal is to limit as much disturbance as possible. I think the stakes, one thing I'll say about the stakes, they're not absolutely perfect from the standpoint, I mean, I looked at the plan and I said, okay, let's make sure that we're 20 feet away from the face of the retaining wall. So, the stakes are probably a little more conservative than what would happen, but I didn't want to put something out there and somebody come back and say, oh, no, you, you know. So, I was trying to be conservative when we decided where to put the stakes. I very much appreciate the comment about the professionalism on our surveyors, so since they work for me, that's a good thing, so. But I, but they were staked by surveyors, so they put them in the ground based upon the design information that we gave them. Ah, let's see here. Lots of traffic here. Guess we'll come back to traffic fence, maximize. As far as traffic goes, I know traffic is one of those issues. There was a discussion about the age of the traffic study. The 2004 traffic study, the trip generation that that traffic study developed was slightly different than what it is today. Why? Because the ITE Trip Generation Manual, which is what's used in our industry, might have been the fifth edition or the sixth edition of the ITE Trip Generation Manual. Today we use the ninth. I have found that throughout my career, I do a lot of traffic engineering, that the analysis that's done as far as those trips and the changes in those trip values are very, very small. So, a single-family residential house has been 9.63 trips per day for about as long as I can remember. It's based on the number of studies that are done for a specific type of site, they have to be done a certain way, they get sent to ITE. ITE then puts them in their database, and then they do statistical analysis and regression equations, and the more studies they have, the tighter and tighter the data gets. It's not a perfect science, I mean, I'll be the first one to tell you. Those are the guidelines that we rely on, that's what CDOT requires, that's what the City of Woodland Park requires, that's what communities across the country view as the method. The 2004 trips that were generated in that study, if I went back and tried to recreate the square footage and all of the uses that they were proposing then, I can tell you that we're probably within 3%, give or, probably 2% of what I would come up with using today's trip generation study. CDOT, and I think this is an important thing to understand, CDOT requires a traffic study when you have more than 100 trips per day. Oh, I'm sorry, 100 trips during the peak hour, sorry, not per day. So during the peak hour, if you have less than 100 trips during the peak hour, CDOT does not require a traffic study. We have 133, 34 new weekday trips. We have 13, I believe it was, during the peak hour. So we are well below the threshold for what CDOT would even require for a traffic study. There was a traffic study that was done in 2004, we updated it with a trip generation letter, all of the improvements that were required were built, and there's no new improvements that CDOT would require, even if the full study had been revised. Truck traffic, obviously you're going to have truck traffic during construction. It's, I mean, whether you're building a single-family house, or you're building the existing building that these gentlemen are buying, you know, there's going to be truck traffic. They have very limited truck traffic. We're, once we're open, we're going to have very limited truck traffic as well. So there'll be some deliveries, there's truck traffic that deliver to homes, depending upon what you buy. So, I don't believe, during construction, there'll be some truck traffic, but overall, I don't see a huge increase in truck traffic related to this development. You want to talk about kitchens?
Sure, absolutely. To kind of answer the question about the kitchen, I guess I did kind of forget to let you guys know, I wear two hats here. Not only am I the developer, but I'm also actually the builder for this particular project. I will be building all of the facilities. I've built over 14 of these in different states, and these are a residential kitchen. They have residential cooktops with residential hoods with an ansel system that's attached to them. They're cooking home-cooked meals for the individuals in the home, just like everyone in this house, in this room does. So there's no more, no less. They don't do deep fryers, they cook traditional meals. But to say that we would sign something, to say that they could not do that, would be very hard to do when permitted uses such as laundry and dry cleaners, which are chemical-based, are approved as they permit. You also have a repair shop, which are high chemicals, volume, a caterer that can have a kitchen. To limit this on what they can and cannot cook would be kind of a hard situation to look at. Do they do it? No. But to restrict it is hard to say when allowed uses are in excess of what we would be doing. So, if there's any other questions in the building, I'd be more than happy to answer.
Do you have a filtering system, obviously with the...
It's a traditional hood system with an ansel system connected to it. Yeah, so it's not a filter or a recirc air or a makeup air unit such as a restaurant would require. It's just not the volume that you're pushing out. You're pushing out 25 meals, which is most of the time cooked as a lasagna pan, and salads, or you're making pasta, you're making fish, which is baked in small amounts. I have a house of multiple kids, and as they get older, I will be cooking more food than what they'll cook in this facility at one given time. So, it's also what their intake is. So, we're not mass-producing for a hospital, we're not mass-producing for dormitories, we're not mass-producing for sales. It's for 25 individuals living within their own homes here.
I hope your cooking is good, so they don't all wander off to Denny's.
Mine stinks. I actually do not cook very well.
85-year-olds with heart conditions, you're probably not going to deep fry four, but they come over to Denny's and enjoy that deep fry.
Quite a, particular individuals that will be leasing the facility are very homeopathic, right, down-to-earth, a little bit more into the natural scape of foods. So it's not that type of venture.
Another question about the facility relative to sidewalks. Where do these 25 people, do you have an internal meeting rooms or recreational facilities that if they can't walk outside, they can, they can walk inside?
The entire facility is based with all rooms on the exterior of the facility, and then there's an actual walking, six-foot plus hallway within it. They have an exercise area, they have therapy, they have massage area, they have a public dining, a private dining area within it. Facilities for laundry as a residential washer and dryer. So they have actually a sunroom in the front, a sunroom in the back for public areas as well.
On the trees, once again, sheet five, you show the proposed plan, but one of the questions was, and it's missing on the drawing, the size of the trees you plan to plant?
We will plant trees in accordance with the city landscaping requirements.
Does the city require tree sizes?
Yes, we do. If it's an evergreen tree, the minimum size is six feet, six feet high. Oh my.
In the last year, I've walked the site several times. The limits of disturbance is the farthest reach of what we will be doing. So the idea is that we do want to keep the trees. I live in Black Forest myself. I was right at the end of the fire. My insurance has come back to me. I can't even keep a tree within 50 feet. I have to remove 40 to 50 feet from the edge of my eve, so not just my house, I have three-foot eves. So now I have 40 to 50 feet that I have to clear outside of my boundaries. So, even putting a residential home here is now being impacted on that site. So wherever you place it, you have to also look at your fighting concerns. One fire come through and wipe everything out, if there is no clearance, you're setting yourself up for your failure. With us, we've looked at what we can do, and we have spoken with the neighbors of taking stuff and putting it up onto the hill, onto their site. I believe at 1-35, I was discussing it today, and it's not what we've talked about or what we had done. I had suggested that we put more trees up there. The 1-35 is actually, based on the first two lots, only seven trees, based on the actual perimeter. So, on the Glen Cove Drive, Glendale, too many names, they, based on a foot of 242 foot, you're roughly 6.93 trees. So you're at seven trees for the first two lots. 12 trees what we offered, and then some of what we can transplant, and what we feel is, you know, kind of a fair share between the two. 1-35, I mean, it's not enough. We recognize that. We don't want to cut the trees down. I moved to Black Forest for a reason, I love my trees as well. So we want to do what we can to save them. The problem is, is during construction, if we back into something with equipment while we're moving dirt, now I will be persecuted for taking down a tree that was not supposed to be taken care of. Limits of disruption is the farthest extent of which we can go. Not saying that we ever reach that either, because the retaining walls that we've designed are actually closer in. So the idea is to keep them if we can. If we can't, we want to put more back. And that's what we've agreed to. Our extensive landscape plan, again, is above and beyond what the city ordinances call for, for that fact of the area.
I have a couple of questions. Okay. The talk of the semis making a U-turn at the light at Walmart, that's not going to happen.
I hope not.
And my guess is you didn't get permission from Walmart to tell the truck drivers to go through their parking lot and come out. So, that's not going to work. To make a U-turn there at the light at Walmart, semi won't make it. As far as the insurance and yours, I would suggest you change insurance companies, because I can guarantee you, there are companies out there that don't require you to cut them down, they require you to mitigate them in cutting up. And yes, I worked for an insurance company for 27 years.
And a matter of fact, my insurance company is State Farm right now.
Okay. Been there, done there, so...
I actually just went through this recently.
Yep, there's other companies that will do that.
Well, of course, it's unushable by all but the three now.
Yep, I've heard. I've been away from it for a while.
And they all have a 40-foot minimum setback now. I actually am building a house for a client of mine, they will not insure his house unless it is 40 feet, period.
Wow, it's crazy, but I understand the fires.
Absolutely.
I just have a comment, and you can address it or not. Why can you not go up two stories instead of two buildings and save some trees?
So, that's a good question that was brought up during our meeting with the residents, and it's purely market-based. We have a program and a prototype that is this 25-bed facility, and, you know, we feel very strongly that there's a need for at least 50 beds. But from a market perspective, we're doing this in phases, so we're going to build, based on our prototype, one facility of 25 beds. We'll see how the market accepts that. If it's strong, we believe it is, then we'll build the second building. We're not prepared at this point in time, from a feasibility perspective, to sink double the investment into it with where the market sits today. So that, it's purely, it's two things. One is prototype, this is a prototype that is... One is prototype, this is a prototype that is tried and true, that has been used in various places in the country. And the second thing is, it's market-driven. We wanna, I guess there's a third thing. We wanna build a facility that looks like a home. If we start going into two stories, now we start to look more institutional. We lose kind of that home feel. I think we get into issues related to blocking views, as it relates to that. And I don't think it hits the target that we wanna hit from a market perspective, nor do I think that that's the best thing for this community. A single-level product was something that I felt was extremely important to this neighborhood for a variety of reasons. Sightlines, the way it looks, trying to make it have that residential character. I think we've done all that. So those are the reasons why, I guess that answers your question, maybe.
Just a quick stand-up.
Yeah, go ahead.
Ron Reitner, one-two-four Sunrise Drive, Argyle, Texas. I'm the second partner, Justin and I run our MRTB development. I guess first, we can't build a total building.
Thirty-five foot maximum.
Yeah. But the second thing is, we want this to be a win for everyone involved, including the residents. And this design is really to create a home for these folks, it's probably the last one they're gonna have. And, excuse me, if you go to some of the larger facilities, multi-story facilities, you'll see that there is elevators, there are, which you'd have to have, these folks are not gonna be navigating stairs. There's just a separation. So it's not the environment that we are offering as a product, it's not the environment that our operators want as a product. So it very much is the essence of our facility. Is that a single level? It's large enough, but not too large, to be economically feasible for both the developer and the operator. And it makes a, it's gonna be a great place for folks to live.
Thank you.
I've got a follow-on question to that. What are you gonna do with the land up front for the later site?
So, actually, to minimize truck traffic, the way that we've designed the site is to balance the fill. So we will be taking the material from the building one site, placing it on the building two site, and not stockpiling it, but placing it, so that we'll create a pad there. There'll actually be a retaining wall that will be built as part of the first phase of development, along Village Terrace Drive, to be able to place that material and not have to truck it off-site. So what we don't wanna do is have to take the material that we removed from building one, put it in a truck, truck it somewhere else, and then have to truck in a bunch of material for the next building. So we're trying to balance the site, I mean, that's just good development. Obviously, it saves cost, but it also reduces impacts from a, from a construction standpoint. So that answers your question?
Let me understand this. If you never build the second building-
Mm-hmm.
-you'll also have disturbed the site for the, that building?
We will have created a pad that would be available for another type of development. And otherwise, we're gonna take all that material, we're gonna truck it off-site, and if we go to build building two, we're gonna truck all that material back in, and that's, that is a lot of truck traffic. So we'd like to avoid that. And when we're done with the grading, we're required to seed, stabilize. We have to get to a seventy percent is what the law says, from a growth perspective, before we can consider it stabilized. And so if building two is never built, there'd be a stand of meadow there from the seed mix. And we've worked with the city, they've requested a seed mixture that they've used up here, and it's done really well. And it's to our benefit to get that seed to establish, because we don't want erosion issues, so.
So I guess the other question, another related question. When you look at the two buildings, the lower building is the one that doesn't disturb as many trees as the upper building, but the upper building is one you're gonna build first. Is that correct?
Yes. And the purpose for building the upper building first is because that is the building that has the garage, and that building fits there as it relates to the garage and the access. And once again, we're dealing with a lot of grade, so we're trying to make it fit the site, and the first building has to be the building with the garage.
As opposed to, say, just a storage shed or something? Temporary, temporary?
Well, I think Justin could probably address that. I mean, the garage is an integral piece to the overall way that this works, and the second building doesn't need the garage, 'cause they've got the garage in the first building. And, you know, it's one of those things that I thought was a benefit, because that's where we keep the trash, that's where the deliveries come, that's where the storage and those types of things. Yeah, that's a good point. You might wanna talk to them.
The interim time between move-in and move-out, they usually have got to move individuals' furnitures. So they use the garage actually for maintenance stools, and as well as storage for furnitures such as that. We've designed it to put the trash dumpster, instead of putting it in plain sight, and putting a, another building, or CMU block enclosure, we moved it into a CMU block building, or ALCO, into the left-hand garage floor.
So let me connect the dots here for-
The other thing, can I finish?
Yeah, okay, go ahead.
The other thing is, even if we did the lower building first-
Mm-hmm.
-I still have to take all the dirt from the other site and bring it down to do the first site. Even if I put a storage shed or not, regardless of one or two, I can do either one you want, it doesn't matter. But I still have to clear cut, I still have to move all the dirt to do either one of those buildings. And the reason is, is these buildings are symbiotic uses. The owners, me, and then I'm selling it to the operators, are the same operators, and they work contiguous together with their buildings. So to have them at the same plane, it has to be done at the same time, unfortunately. I can't export and import, or import dirt just to do lower one, and then export two on the higher side. The soil that we have there is actually one of the best soils that we have in Colorado. It is the perfect dirt to flip right on over and use, without having to import outside soils either. So either way, we're gonna cut the top, bring it to the bottom and build that one, or we're gonna cut the top, put it on the bottom, and build that one later.
Is your best guess, just because, again, there was a clear concern expressed about construction traffic-
Mm-hmm.
-and I live around, it's kind of around there. And I built, we built a home here, so I get the fact of moving dirt around a construction site. Right now, is your best guess that a lot of that excavation dirt will be, remain on the other pod? I mean, I'm not talking about numbers of trucks and all that, just a general sense. 'Cause I think the concern that was expressed by somebody earlier is, you see these large loaders filled with dirt running down residential streets and out onto twenty-four.
Or balanced site.
But at the end of the day, you're gonna have some of it, but is most of what you take out gonna stay to build up the next site?
Absolutely. So the first thing we're gonna do is, we're gonna strip the topsoil.
Yeah.
Why? 'Cause we wanna keep the topsoil.
Right.
So we're gonna strip the topsoil, we will have a stockpile of topsoil, so that we can use the topsoil again. We've gone through, and to the best that we're able to do, which is usually pretty darn close, is balance the site. So the objective is to take the material from the building one site, put it down where the building two site will go, the site balances, and we don't have the tandem trucks full of dirt running around like you see in some of these construction sites.
Exactly.
Yeah.
And again, is it fair to say that you're not developing four areas, because you don't think eventually you're gonna put the second building up? You're pretty optimistic, I would imagine, on this project being completed as a whole?
Extremely positive.
Right.
Hundred percent, I can't guarantee it, but yes, we are more than-
Eighty-eight.
Whatever, whatever it is. We are pretty high up there that this is a return within a year.
Okay.
Or give or take a little. But, and the construction time as a duration, I've seen a lot of projects up here that have taken a lot of time. This is actually a six-month build plus one to two months-
Yeah, I was really surprised about that.
-with the dirt moving.
Yeah.
You know, we try to give a little bit of extra time, so we're looking at an eight-month or less.
Yeah.
Depending on-
Weather.
-weather and stuff. We've taken allocations for time to panelize the building, so that we can actually bring it from Colorado Springs in sections, and we will literally not have framing crews out there, we will have people that are setting panels and then working within the building. Confines, pretty immediate. I mean, once we get a foundation in, you know, we will be setting up our construction to work inside. Most of the guys are not loving the weather. I've lived in Wisconsin, I don't mind cold, but it's a little different here, so.
So in theory, this, if this all goes as planned, the construction process on both buildings could be done within thirteen, eighteen months or so? Both buildings?
Twenty-four.
More like twenty-four, because we would come back to the building once it stabilizes. The actual building construction is six months for process time.
Yeah, for the first building.
Yeah. Well, the second building is six months as well for the construction time. It's the time in-between for the stabilization for the building, so that they can actually get people in, stabilize, and then we come back to do it.
Okay.
Yeah. So our construction time is very short on the actual facility.
Yes.
Because it is single-story, it's not super tall. It makes it a lot easier to keep our time down. Plus, I built fourteen of them, so it makes it a little bit easier for me to-
Okay, I don't wanna belabor it, but I'm trying to get a better picture of the nuisance factor for the neighbors, which of course, it is commercial property-
It is still more developed.
-but particularly the concern about child safety and other things-
Absolutely.
-large trucks. And it seems, it's not gonna be devoid of it, but when, your best guess is, we're not gonna have a procession on an hourly basis of these-
No.
-you know, goldmine-type trucks roaming around Remax and barreling down the highway?
No.
Pardon me?
No.
I guess one thing I'd point out is, from a grading, probably, and I mentioned this earlier, the heaviest, you know, large scale, and I'm not talking the stuff at the goldmine, I mean, just, you know, front-end loaders and dirtwork type of machines are gonna be about a month.
Okay.
And the nice thing is, is that because we're doing it the way we're doing, the second building, most of the site work will just about be done.
It'll be done, right.
So we'll be moving right to foundations. The sewer line will be in, so the disturbance will be much smaller on the second building. And we're talking about probably a month for the grading-type work.
Okay. Thank you.
You bet.
Anybody else?
Thank you very much.
Any questions among ourselves, or of staff?
Yeah, Sally. I mean, this, this traffic thing is, is kind of, you know, it's not necessarily the responsibility of the developer, it seems to me to be a city issue. And I think the question was pertinent, do we have, do this body have any mechanism by which we can mandate that certain signs be put up there? I mean-
Typically, the neighborhood, if they have concerns about traffic, will contact either the police department or the public works department. And then our city engineer, Bill Alsbach, will confer with the police chief. And there are standards for traffic control devices.
That seems awfully bureaucratic.
They will, they will apply. They want to be able to treat neighborhoods equally and fairly, they will look at it seriously. And we have, I, I don't know that we have any traffic engineers on the planning commission, so you leave it up to the experts to make the assessment and evaluate.
But is there, okay, but how do we get them to do that, other than, you know, by happenstance of the community coming-
It's a request to the police department and the-
But this body cannot back up that, that kind of-
We have no authority.
No. We have no authority to do that.
We have no authority on setting speed limits or traffic control devices.
Couldn't we make a simple recommendation?
You can make a recommendation to have it looked at.
Yes.
Right.
That's what I think you're asking.
Yeah.
Just can we make-
We were asked if you needed to do something, so I'm asking.
Instead of having the neighborhood do it, why don't we do it?
That would be fine.
You can do that, but I will tell you that you, as neighbors in an area with kids running around that are yours, will get farther along with the city than we will. Because if you drive around this community where there are a lot of children, there's children playing signs, there's speed bumps that drive you absolutely insane, slow you down. What I mean is, that has already been done. As I have driven through your area, you've got a lot of kids in your area playing on the road. Not walking on the road, playing on the road. I used to do that when I was a kid, we played baseball on the street.
They didn't have cars then.
There was a couple of cars there. What I'm saying is, you are far more effective to go as a unit, the police department, and to go to the, to Bill Alsbach than we are. Would we recommend it for you? Sure. But you need to get together as people in your area and go do that. Because it's for your kids you're talking about. I see them out there. We're looking for final deliberation motions and all that good kind of stuff.
I just want to make a comment about the trees. I'm regretful that we are losing some of those trees, the footprint of the building and the setbacks. I think it's within the rights of the developer to develop the property, and the efforts they're making to increase the landscape and come back with the trees. I don't think I can object to the tree issue as it stands and proposed.
But, you know, I would recommend that, and the one gal had a good idea, as you're clumping together and doing the things, talk to the people in the neighborhood, see what their views are, where they would like that done. It doesn't cost anymore to do that. And sure, it gives you a lot of goodwill for working in the neighborhood, as being a neighbor to everybody. It really does. Yeah, no question. Can we make that a requirement?
No.
No.
That they work with the neighbors to place those trees? Is that a-
As I stated before, I actually set up and wanted to help do a meeting. We were coordinated, I met onsite with them, I'd be more than happy to do it again with them. I had no problem with them, I'll state it right now with everybody. It doesn't need to be part of it, 'cause we've already done it once, and we'll do it again. And hopefully, I can satisfy it for you. And I'd be more than happy to put a date on it when we're ready to move the trees. And as soon as we have it, I'd love to bring it to you, which would be by the next meeting. Once you're getting scheduled to put together, because it is on the-
November fifth.
Thank you.
November fifth.
Of the last reading.
Yeah.
We would be able to know, and we could set up a date from there.
Acceptable? Yeah. To me, I don't know about the community, but to me, that would be good. We're looking for a motion, folks.
Uh, that suggestion-
Go ahead.
Okay. I'd like to, you know, to move that this body recommends to the city planning department and public works department that they take a serious look at the traffic in the signage along Glen Cove Road in Glendale with regard to this, this new development.
That's an added condition for the approval or-
Yes.
Recommendation. Add the police department in there, too.
And Commissioner Watson-
And the police department.
Is that just during construction, or is that during-
That's now, that, to gather the implications, they're both during construction and long-term.
I guess I would like to say, you know, from our perspective, there's gonna be construction traffic, there's gonna be traffic after construction. As it relates to, I'm just, and I'm not trying to be difficult, but to try to make that a condition of us, I think it's kind of difficult.
Oh, no, I was, no, that was, that was-
But it can't be added to their condition of use.
No, no. That's a motion-
Just separate.
Right. Separate.
If my colleagues agree with me, that's a motion to ask us, ask the city to-
Yes.
-to specifically study that.
I see. And Commissioner Watson, as part of this referral process and the review of these applications, the city has looked at the existing supplemental traffic-
Okay, then I'll add to that, relative to the concerns expressed by the community and this, this body with regard to traffic implication.
He wants it looked at again.
And understand, this is gonna go to council, there's another public hearing, you have your chance to get up and say- You have your chance to get up and say that again. It's your right to do that. So if you, if that's a concern of that, of you, of that and the kids and that stuff, make sure you get up and voice that to the council that has the final vote on us.
Okay, I believe I have a motion now on the table.
I will second your motion.
This is just to-
Just, this is directing staff to-
Yeah. Do we need a, do we need a voice vote, or what do we need?
You can even just do it by consensus. Just say-
Consensus, all ready to do that?
Yes.
Okay. Now let's get to another motion.
All right. Okay, I'd like to move that I have to recite all this, right?
No.
That we approve the conditional use permit and site plan review for use 18.09.090.J. Point 3, nursing home, convalescent home, rest home, and home for the aged, lots 1 to 4 in the village, subject to the five conditions, I believe, that have already been outlined, for a 50-bed, two-building assisted living facility, and the vacation of the village terrace right of way. Second.
Hi, Steve. And if I could have just clarification on this discussion about the applicant meeting with the neighbors about the trees? Is that a suggestion and that the applicant agreed to that, or is that another condition on the other?
I have not included that as another condition.
Put that along with the same one you got with the police department.
But it's a consensus among the group that you would like to see the applicant work with the neighbors on the placement of trees.
That's how I feel, yes.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification.
Now, do you want to call a roll?
Yes. Watson?
Yes.
Hartsfield?
Yes.
Hislop?
Yes.
Pendlin?
Yes.
Probst?
With a heavy heart, I will vote yes. I hate to see the trees go away, but I, legally, I can't stop it. Thank you.
Yes. Thank you. Scanlon?
Yes.
Standard?
Yes.
And Devo?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you, folks. Thanks for coming. Reports. Chairman's report I have done.
We haven't done yet.
Commissioner's report. Anybody else have anything they want to pass into the order? Anybody want to talk about anything that, any news or whatever, anything your heart desires right now?
Is there any rumors about, I asked Sally earlier, about the Paradise Building, I guess it is? The one that they've acknowledged? The chimneys at? Are there rumors about anything going in there, other than just selling the land?
You would not be able to even discuss rumors.
Oh, we can discuss. I wasn't asking you. Planning directors-
We have a city barbecue.
Yeah, we do.